Out on the roadway and you see the unfortunate accident that's happened and you've got fire and police and red lights all over the place and traffic comes either to a halt or a snail's pace and those types of things. And then there's other times where you see maybe work crews on the side of the road or they may actually have a lane closed because they're working on something in the roadway there. This proclamation is for that as well. We want to bring awareness that if you're driving around out on the roadways and you see flashing lights, please respond accordingly. Please respond and slow down. It's not the time to be texting and those types of things. Making sure that you're aware of the surroundings because all of the men that are represented here as well as the men and women in all of our departments literally put themselves in harm's way when they're out doing their job and those types of things. And we don't want to have further accidents as a result of them being on the road and working a particular accident or working a construction site or those types of things. So with that, I'm going to read this proclamation and we're going to do our best to continue to promote and bring awareness to you guys that are out there on the road as you're doing your day by day job, but sometimes you've got to be out there in the midst of an accident. Whereas first responders and their agencies, both career and volunteer, police, fire, EMS, and public works departments, in addition to hazmat companies, safety service patrol, courtesy patrol, vehicle towing and recovery companies, safety and maintenance personnel from public agencies and other organizations in public safety come together as first responders to aid the public in the event of an emergency or traffic incident. Whereas first responders risk their own safety in the execution of their duties to protect each other and the motoring public. And whereas first responders and their agencies are essential and indispensable members of our communities, always ready in any conditions to respond and to resolve roadway incidents and emergencies. And whereas the city of Pearland supports all men and women who provide for safe, quick roadway clearance. Now therefore, I, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of our great city of Pearland, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of November 13th through 19th, 2022 as Crash Responder Safety Week. And just want to join, ask you folks to join with me in not just celebrating what they do, but bring awareness. So when you see the flashing lights, slow down, move over, be very conscious of what's going on because they're working the scene and they don't need to be necessarily looking out of all sides of their head. I know you guys are trained to do that, but it's real important that you guys are taking care of the necessary people that are in a particular incident. This brings to mind, when I was at HDAC on that Friday, Transportation Policy Council meeting, I sit next to Mayor Joe Zimmerman from Sugar Land and we talk a lot and they actually had an officer very badly injured about five months ago, six months ago now, working an accident on Highway I-69. He was actually hit twice in the same incident. And so he has survived that. It's going to be a very long road for him, but that was very vivid, sitting next to my mayor from Sugar Land, reliving the moment that he got that phone call. So I don't want that phone call. You don't want that phone call. So let's just make sure that we keep these folks in our thoughts, number one, but number two, remember them when you see those flashing lights. Fellas, thank you for what you do. Thank you each and every one of you for not only taking your job seriously, but being out there and protecting and solving and working accident scenes as well as public work scenes. Again, a lot of times you're right there on the side of the road repairing things and doing those types of things. So we appreciate each one of you for what you do each and every day. Just keep up the good work. Okay? All right. Thank you very much. All right. With that, those here for our Arbor Day, if y'all would, is there a representative or two? There's a crowd here. So is there going to be one or two? We'll also come up for presentation as well. So Jerry, you're going to up represent in the hole? All right. All right. All right, here we go. Proclamation Officer Mayor City of Pearland. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. This holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas in 1889, Texas Arbor Day first appeared in Temple on February the 22nd. The next year, the state of Texas held the first observation, observance of Arbor Day. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, trees can be a solution combating climate change by mitigating adverse effects of paved surfaces, reducing the erosion of our topsoil by wind and water, moderating the temperature, cutting heating and cooling costs, cleaning the air, producing oxygen, and providing ecological balance for a more natural environment. And whereas trees as a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our roadways, and strengthen our commitment to being the community of choice. And whereas Arbor Day in Texas is held on the first day, first Friday in November. Now therefore, I, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Pearland, do hereby proclaim Friday, November the 4th, 2022 as Arbor Day. And just wish each and every one of you to help us celebrate that not only this year in November, but also each and every year in November. Just be mindful of the trees and the natural resources that we do have. Hopefully more and additional resources coming as we plant trees and do your best to plant a tree. So with that, Jerry, you've got a few things?
Thank you very much, Mayor Cole. So to celebrate Arbor Day this year, the city of Pearland has put together a poster contest. This year's theme was Trees Are Important for Today and Tomorrow. So as you go out in the foyer a little bit, you'll notice there are 12 pictures drawn by these students. There's four different class categories, K through second, third through fifth, sixth through eighth, and then high school age 12 through nine through 12. So at this time, I'd like to recognize the students who have won. So when I call your name, please come up here with your teacher and let's take a picture with the mayor. So first place from Cornerstone Elementary, Angela Long Lynn and her teacher Jennifer Anderson. Very good. Second place from Cornerstone Elementary, Mahum Walani. She's not here, okay. Third place, Cornerstone Elementary student is Libby Pham with her teacher Jennifer Anderson. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Go have a seat, please. Jennifer, sit here. So for grades third through fifth, first place from Cornerstone Elementary, London Nguyen. Her teacher is Jennifer Anderson. Second place from Cornerstone Elementary is Eden Shown. Third place from Cornerstone Elementary was Harvey Thoda. Grades six through eight, first place from First Colony Middle School, Fort Bend ISD is Henry Johnson and his teacher Olivia Hooper. Second place from St. Helen Catholic School, Sierra Miranda and her teacher Ms. Varela. Third place from First Colony Middle School, Fort Bend ISD is Ranon Ahmad and his teacher Loretta Sierra. Grades nine through 12, first place from Stephen F. Austin High School in Fort Bend ISD is Ameris Malavano. I don't think they're here today. Second place from Dobie High School, Pasadena ISD is Eric Quinn and teacher Sherri Kit. Third place from Pasadena Memorial High School in Pasadena ISD is Jacqueline Martinez. I don't believe she can be here today. And her teacher is Kim Nguyen. And finally, grades nine through 12, first place from Stephen F. Austin, Fort Bend ISD is Ameris. Is that the one we just did? Is that everybody? Is that everybody? Okay, very good. Well, if y'all would, meet me outside. I'll have your gift cards and we'll dismiss from there. Thank you.
All right, we will start our meeting promptly at 6:30. All right, welcome all to the city council regular meeting agenda for November the 7th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Calling this meeting to order. Next, we'll be moving to our invocation and pledges to our two flags. If you would, in the audience, please join us and stand as Councilmember Owens leads us in our prayer and Councilmember Cam Carr leads us in our two flags, pledges.
Your heavenly Father, as we come to you today, Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you've sent our way and all the things that you've actually done for us. Lord, we forget sometimes the most important prayer that we can give is a prayer of saying thank you. At we all, at any point in time in life, we pray for you to come in and be in our lives and do these various things for us and watch over our people, but we forget at some times of coming back and thanking you for answering those prayers. So we want to thank you for that, Lord, first of all. We thank you for all the people that come out tonight and pray for our council members and the mayor up here tonight as we do the work for the city and we do the things that we should do in the city, Lord, for all the residents of the city. We pray, Lord, for our first responders in the city. We know that there's a lot of evil things that go on, not only in our community, but any other community around here. And we just pray that you be with the first responders, Lord, as they protect our people in the city. We pray for all these things in your name, Lord. Amen.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for leading us in that. And a couple of things. Obviously, we had a tremendous sports weekend, so our Astros brought home the gold and what a great event that was. Absolutely. Yeah, give the Stros a hand. That's good. That's it. That's it. And real quick, Councilmember Owens, just in his prayer, mentioned being thankful and thanks. This is the month of Thanksgiving. And so let's just be mindful and give thanks for all the blessings that we have throughout each and every one of us here in Pearland and abroad. So thank you for leading in that and actually setting the tone for the month that we have a lot to be thankful for and are very appreciative of that. As we move forward in our agenda, roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I will certify we have a quorum present as all members of the council are present and accounted for here in the chambers. With that, we'll move to citizens' comments. I believe all the comments that we did receive or papers to sign up to speak are for specific issues, none under general comments. So we will call on you when we get to that particular agenda item. With that, we will quickly move and real quick, just for concurrence from council, we're going to do our three public hearings and we also have consent agenda. And I'm going to request that we move item number six to immediately after that as that's a pretty weighty issue. We want to put that right up front in our council agenda. So when we get there, we'll be moving that item unless there's an objection to leaving it in its place. So with that, we'll move to public hearing number one. With that, John, I'm not sure who's going to present, but if the staff could read into the record the reason and move right into your staff report.
Yes, sir. Public hearing one is a request by Westside SC Pearland LTD applicant and owner for approval of conditional use permit, CUP, for Jim Health Club, use on approximately 5.044 acres of land within the Neighborhood Services District, generally located in the 5,060 to 5,070 Broadway Street on Pearland. This is a request to allow Jim Health Club with the CUP within the Neighborhood Services District. This is a map showing an aerial of the area and the zoning districts. The parcel is Neighborhood Services and is surrounded by residential to the south and east and other commercial to the west and north. This is the future land use map. Exhibit A shows a detail of the strip center with the area highlighted, which would be where the CUP for the Jim Health Club would be. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request at their regular meeting on October 17th, and the commission stated they would approve the request without any additional conditions. That's all we have, sir.
All right, thank you for that. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is present, sir.
Okay. Do you have any presentation or are you just here to answer questions? Wonderful. Thank you for being here tonight. With that, we will move forward in our public hearing to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Can go to the podium, give your name and address for the record and get three minutes to speak. Second request for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing none, we'll move it to city council for questions, comments, and concerns. I don't see any. With that, we'll close this public hearing and move to new business item number one, which I was going to have Hernandez give. So, oh, there he is. Wait two seconds. Member Hernandez, would you put item number one on the table, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2022-CUP22-23.
We have a motion in a second. We've had staff report. Madam Secretary, we're going to call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, same drill, John, we'll move to new business, excuse me, public hearing number two.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing number two is a request by Colin Davidson with Meta Planning and Design LLC applicant on behalf of Fairbanks Group's LLC owner and Adam Omren owner for approval of a zone change from residential estate RE District to single-family residential three, R3 District on three tracts of land totaling approximately 12.48 acres, generally located north of Magnolia Parkway and west of Curry Drive. Again, a zone change request from residential estate district to single-family R3 on three tracts of land. This is the aerial and zoning map showing the location for the proposed project and the rezoning. This is the future land use map to show that it is residential. Close up of the subject property. Planning and zoning commission conducted a public hearing for the subject zone change request at their regular meeting on October 17th. Four members of the public spoke against the zone change, generally addressing topics of drainage, overcrowding of schools, and expansion of Magnolia Parkway. The commission reviewed the discussion with drainage, the price point of the homes to be built, compatibility with surrounding development, and after discussion, the commission voted to approve the requested zone change from RE to R3 by a vote of 5-0. This is a positive recommendation to the council. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Applicant present? There we go. You have a presentation? With that, we'll move to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Go to the podium, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak. We have somebody moving in that direction. Thank you for being here tonight.
Hi there. My name is Christina Miller. Address 11814 Cascade Falls Lane. I am one of the properties that joins this new community. One of my main concerns is that we are a master plan community with some thoughtful design. I would like to see that same level of thoughtful design in a future community, especially addressing flooding concerns and just really overcrowding with Magnolia Parkway already being expanded. You know, we're always grateful to have new neighbors, but since they're not planning on joining our HOA, we're curious as to how it will be regulated and maintained, especially since that property was zone residential estate in the 2015 master Pearland. We're wondering why it's suddenly going to high density. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second request for those, here we go.
Hello. I also live there. Laura Torrijos, 3523 Master Ridge Lane. I'm not as close at it, but I'm part of that residential area. I do have the same concerns. It wasn't a master plan, that's okay. It looks like at some point, my main concern that I have always with Pearland is that we just have two main veins for traffic, which has Broadway and Magnolia, and having a density exactly on Magnolia and already that back road, even with expansion, has a lot of traffic. So I don't see how this is going to get minimized or is going to be a compromise in the future. I don't see the long term of how that is going to be controlled. And also, as mentioned, we were there for Harvey. We did kind of good. Some houses were closed, but again, the soil. And also that area is unfortunate. If you don't know, a lot of the houses in that section already are sinking. So having more density there, I don't know how they will do great. And my main concern is how can I trust this will be the case with something that arbitrarily appear in the plans of the city exactly right now? And I do believe this project can be analyzed properly after, I don't know, elections where we have another round of people that those will be the ones dealing with it. I don't know, some changes, I hope not much. And I think it can be, we can do better considering the long term. And that's it. It's a natural soil, more analysis, urban planning. And again, it's more like, what do you want? What do we want? And what can we do? So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Same request, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing none, I'll open it up to questions, comments, concerns from city council. Member Cam Carr?
I guess my question is, Mayor, as far as the density R3, aren't those lots similar in size to the adjacent lots?
Exactly the same size.
Okay, so we don't necessarily have to worry about the disparity in the lot size. What about features within the neighborhood outside of any green space, anything like that planned? I know this is not the time for that, but give us some insight into what the neighborhood's going to look like as it corresponds to the surrounding neighborhood.
So I actually will plug in my presentation because we did have a site plan that we prepared.
Thank you.
I'll need someone to log me in. But to answer some of the questions, we are doing onsite detention. We'll have to meet all the requirements that will go through permitting. So of course, we're going to do everything that we have to do to make sure that we're not flooding anybody. Maybe not. As for parkland and open space, it's a very small development, so we're not proposing to do like a large playground or anything like that. It just wouldn't, the size of the development wouldn't justify that. But there is going to be, you know, the density is going to be the same as what's in Southern Trails, lot size is going to be the same. There's probably going to be a little bit of open space. We're giving all the widening that we need to give to Magnolia Parkway and that'll be landscaped along the edge as necessary. So it should look comparable to Southern Trails.
Obviously, you're going to have all the detention. And John, as far as the development goes, that development's supposed to be self-contained when it comes to drainage and whatnot, have its own detention and whatnot?
Yes, sir. Unless they have rights to another detention point, which I don't believe they do, during the development process, all their detention requirements, land, park, open space, et cetera, would be reviewed and they'd be required to meet and conform with those requirements before any permits would be issued.
Thank you. That's all I've got. All right. With that, Member Cam Carr?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Can we pull up the layout? Like they have a land plan.
We're working on it.
While I do that, I'll give you some time. Mr. Upton, are they complying? I'm a filibuster here for a second for you. Are they complying with the new standard that we had to change, I want to say like six weeks ago, where everybody's now complying with that, was 14?
Correct. They would be required under the new standard.
That's helpful. Then a second item, that area is the extension west of 288 Magnolia Parkway. It's a, let's call it underutilized or undercapacity space. Can you kind of give a context of what improvements are happening there? I drive by this area relatively frequently and I'm seeing poles moved back, I'm seeing grading, I'm starting to see them. Can you just give, for the context of what are the improvements from a road utility perspective?
Sure. Councilman Cam Carr, with regards to that, that project has been funded through Tech Dot and managed by Brazoria County, and they'll be widening that road to four lanes. That's why there's construction going on, utility movement right now. While I do that, I'll give you some time. Mr. Upton, are they complying? Well, filibuster here for a second for you. Are they complying with the new standard that we had to change, I want to say like six weeks ago, where everybody's now complying with that was 14?
Correct. They would be required under the new standard.
It's helpful. Then a second item. That area is the extension west of 288 Magnolia Parkway. It's a, let's call it under, underutilized or undercapacity space. Can you kind of give a context of what improvements are happening there? I drive by this area relatively frequently, and I'm seeing poles moved back. I'm seeing grading. I'm starting to see them. Can you just give, for the context of what are the improvements from a road, road utility perspective?
Sure. Councilman Cam Carr, with regards to that, that project has been funded through TechDOT and managed by Bressoria County, and they'll be widening that road to four lanes. That's why there's construction going on, utility movement right now. With regards to the process, I believe it's already been let. It's awarded to a contractor by the name SCR Contracting. So we're very familiar with that contractor. They've done and been very successful with the city. I look forward to that success continuing with Bressoria County. And that project will be underway, and that'll convert it to four lanes of concrete, curb and gutter, and their drainage system associated with that.
What is the extent, you know, I know you're not Bressoria County, but you know where the extent of where that is going to start?
It's a continuation from Kirby, where we have our four lanes right now, and then continuing to County Road 48 and tying in there.
Okay, great. Thank you for putting the land plan up there. There's only so much you can do there.
It's not a very big site.
No, it's not. One question I would ask, and I think the, the neighbors made a valid point on the HOA perspective. How is this going to be managed? Because communities that have HOAs, for some weird reason, just look better because they're maintained better. There's an enforcement notice, and nobody wants to be out of compliance. But what are the restrictions that the owners putting on this? And is there going to be an HOA?
I, I don't know the specific CCRs. I don't know that anything has been really drafted yet because we're still at the zoning stage. I believe there's an intent to have an HOA, but I, I can't speak to what specifically.
Who the end user is or the builder is on this, or is this?
The current owner is working with designers to, to build. I don't think they're selling to a particular.
It's not a production builder.
It's not, no, it's no. It's not a national builder or anything like that.
Everybody here has to make their own things, their own decisions. The HOA thing is important, and I understand the validation piece. Communities that have HOAs generally just stand up better on value, appearance. I can't argue with the drainage. I can't argue with the roads. But I won't be supportive unless I hear a more definitive reason that an HOA is in place or a commitment to put something in place. I just, I live in this area. This is going to be a changing area, but there is a definite tonal look when you're right across the street at Cascade Falls Lane. And it could be a junkyard in 15, 15 years, could be a junkyard in five years. But the reality is, I'm not hearing a production builder who I would trust. I know will put restrictions in place. I'm literally hearing the owner. And that, that doesn't, that doesn't give me a warm fuzzy. So I won't be supportive. I can't speak to what anybody else will do. It's, it's to their decision. But the HOA, I think, is an exceedingly reasonable request, considering that home values here are north of 300,000, 400,000 for some homes, and, and there needs to be some way to keep that value up.
I do believe there's an intent to have an HOA. I just, I'm not familiar with the specifics.
And I hear intent, and I appreciate that, but is the owner here to answer this question?
No.
I mean, it's really hard for me to go and improve that. I think Member Owens usually has a rule. If you don't show up, he usually doesn't get on board, at least with engineers. But I, I think this is important. Three members of the community have showed up. I hear them. I see them. I hear their concerns. The HOA thing, I'm not hearing an answer on. I'm hearing the answer on drainage and utilities for roads.
Okay.
I'm not going to be there. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, Staff, who's going to maintain the 2.1 acre detention barn?
As with required, is that it would be done by the property owners or the HOA or whatever mechanism they have that would be maintained and operated by that subdivision?
So either the investor that develops this is going to hang on to it in perpetuity, or they're going to form an HOA and kick it to them?
Or there's an agreement among the property owners set forth tied to that, that they would operate and maintain that somehow.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Member Coza?
What are the price points on the homes that are going to be built here?
Again, the, the floor plans haven't been fully designed, so I couldn't tell you what a specific price point would be. But it's a 60-foot wide lot in the current market. I think the, the floor plans are in the 3,000 square foot range. So I mean, you can do the math.
All right. Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none. Staff, is that any other wrap-up comments?
I would just, just add that our UDC does not require the creation of a homeowners association for the development of subdivision.
All right. So with that, we will end this public hearing number two. And Mr. Cam Carr, would you place item number two on the table for consideration?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration possible action. First reading of ordinance number 2000M-241, so move.
Second. We have a motion in a second. We've had staff report, questions, comments from council. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr?
No.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
No.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Coza?
No.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Motion fails one to six.
All right. Moving forward to public hearing number three. John, place the item up, or explain the item, and then move into the staff report, please.
Sir, public hearing number three is a request by Javier Esquino, applicant on behalf of Elizabeth Gills, owner for approval of a zone change from single-family residential two, R2 District, to single-family residential three, R3 District on three tracts of land totaling approximately 12.3429 acres of land, generally located south of West Orange Street and east of Hatfield Road. Again, a request to rezone from single-family R2 to single-family R3 on three tracts in West Orange and east Hatfield area. This is a aerial showing the, a zoning map showing the tracts of land under this request. This is the future land use map showing medium-density residential for this area as well as the surrounding areas. Again, an aerial of the subject property. Planning and zoning conducted a public hearing for the request at the regular meeting on October 17th. There were four members of the public who spoke against the request. The items discussed the support for the development of the property due to the limited large lots available for residential development. The commission did vote to approve the requested zone change by a vote of three to two, but the subject zone change request was protested by owners of approximately 28% of land adjacent to this property, and therefore, a supermajority vote by council will be required for its approval. That concludes my report, sir.
Okay. Before we move to for and against, just for the record, Darren, supermajority is six out of seven?
That is correct.
Okay. Good deal. We'll get to that as we get to the vote in the, in the next item. So we'll open this back up to the applicant. I see you guys here tonight. Do you have a presentation?
Presentation, we're here. I'd like to, oh, first, my name is Xavier Esquino. My address is 11622 Monmart Boulevard in Houston. And we came today mainly to answer any questions that the council members and, uh, Mayor might have. The, the, the fact here that we want to highlight is that what we are here, vote, what, what you will be voting for, it's only the difference between the frontage of the lots, which R2 is for 70-foot lots, and we're pretending to build a community with 60-foot lots. And the reason is the cost of the land or the builders. We, as developers, have a network of builders that follow us, us in different places. By the way, being Pearland, the one that is more demanded than any other place right now. So someone obviously is doing something very well here. So the difference, I mean, the, the price of the homes will not be affected by 10-foot of frontage land. The price of the homes are going to be in the north of 425,000 to 475,000 dollars. The builder is a builder that I understand built 1,300 homes last year. Name is Castle Rock, and we have a contract with them right now. Again, so our request is for the, the, the members of the council to vote yes, so we can make this economically feasible for the builder. The difference is a mayor deal in the number of lots, and mayor is 20% of, of more or less lots, and that makes feasible or not the, the small project. We have plans to access other owners around the area and maybe expand it at the proper time. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for that. We may have some questions for you here in just a minute. So we'll ask those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Can go to the podium, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you for being here. I think you guys also gave us a speaker registration card.
Good evening. I'm Charlotte Silveira, and this is my husband, Richard. My childhood home, which is now, which I now own, is at 6520 West Orange Street, which shares a property line with this development. This development is going to have high-quality homes that will enrich the community. This zoning change will increase the number of houses from 36 to 42 homes. My husband, Richard.
Hi. And I just wanted to highlight the difference in the, um, the number of homes going from 36 to 42 homes is, is basically what you're, you're voting on. You know, six homes and one of the, we didn't come to the planning meeting, um, hearing. We were kind of left out of the loop. But, uh, and we watched the video, and some of the concerns were the value, the noise, and the traffic. I think the, really the only quantifiable, measurable thing that they brought up was the traffic. And the, I mean, most planning considerations are like 2.5 trips per home, from what I understand. I mean, I'm not a city developer or anything, but that's what I understand. So we're talking about 15 trips down, up and down Orange Street a day is what most of our neighbors were complaining about at the planning committee and, uh, meeting. And I think the asking those residents to endure 15 more trips of cars up and down the Orange Street is not that onerous, I don't think, considering what is going to be brought to the table by these developers. At that meeting, they said each house is going to be in the neighborhood of $500,000. $500,000 times 42 homes, that's $21 million in real estate development. And $21 million, how much is that in tax revenue? Like 400,000 at least? You know, how many home, how many teachers, how many police officers, how many firemen can you employ with that kind of money? You know, and I think 60-foot lots, if you look around, is like a large lot. It's not, I mean, around in that community, there's a lot of 60-foot lot communities. And 70-foot lots are kind of going by the wayside because of the current economic trend of increasing interest rates, increasing inflation, all that stuff. They're becoming way too expensive. So I, I don't think asking them to, to endure 15 trips up and down Orange Street is that big a deal. And I think it would be, it would not be fair to the community. So. And that's, not to mention the amount of money that these types of people bring to the community. The overall economic impact will be much, much greater. Their, their participation in nonprofits, and their, you know, they're buying and shopping in our communities, all of that stuff. So I just, I, I really wish you would, um, go along with the recommendation of the city, the professional city planners, the staff, and the, you know, the city, you know, the, the planning committee. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We'll do a second call for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Thank you, sir, for being here tonight.
Thank y'all. Ladies and gentlemen of City Council, Pearland and supporting staff, I'd like to thank all of y'all for all the work that you do on a continual basis and all the integrity y'all keep with the city. Everybody knows that y'all have one of the best school systems here in the surrounding area, and y'all are here tonight and for other reasons to keep all that stuff supported.
Give me, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Chase Boker. I live in Galveston, Texas. I have multiple companies there and some stuff here in Pearland as well. This development has dual-access abilities. You will see from the charts and the layout of the property, the lot layout was not provided to you, but to the east of the property is all city of Pearland land. Right off there, there is a city park on the other side, to the west of that. To the north of this development is West Orange Street, which will have street access for the neighborhood. And then on the west side is Hatfield Road, and so you'll have a dual-access neighborhood. So it provides the right capabilities for traffic, for in and out, for the general facilities, and emergency access if ever needed. And it surprises all of us in the fact that it is such a great location and a great layout for that section over there that is mostly farmland and, and horse ranches and small ranchettes right now. I do want to take this time again to thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you for that. Second request, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Jimenez.
Roberto Jimenez.
My husband and I own the property at 2207 Hatfield Road, which is adjacent to the construction site. If you pull up the map, you can see the single-family home. This property was purchased by us 15 years ago directly from Mr. Crawford. These two tracts on Hatfield Road are part of the Crawford subdivision, the original Crawford subdivision. So when we purchased this property, it was our intent to build our forever home, which we did. And now we have this new development wanting to be built next door. So yes, it's easy to say it's just more homes where you're not living next to it, and you're going to have 10, 11 houses alongside of your home. Okay? And so, again, the area arounding, surrounding, everyone is compliant to this R2 zoning. Even the subdivision that is going on without a hitch across the street is also complying. So I know that the construction is going on, on a daily basis because I work from home, and I hear the construction going every day. So my concern is the noise. My concern is the traffic and the zoning of the schools. I've lived here. I built my home 10 years ago. My children have been affected by the zoning, and I had to relocate them to a new school because of the overcrowding in our current schools. So that's another issue that we need to address. And so, you know, yes, it's, I think it's something that we need to consider is the area. There's Walker Estates around the corner. The ones across, the subdivision across the street is also complying. Why can't they? And I don't know that it's fair to have family members. I know that this was, you know, I don't know how long you've been in Pearland, but Crawford subdivision is kind of that whole corner of Orange and Hatfield, and a lot of those are family members. So if you have your family member up here saying, yes, you should sell, is that really, you know, something that you, you know, should consider? Because if it was my family, yes, I'm going to vote for my family. And so I think that's pretty much what we wanted, wanted to say is this is our forever home that you're coming to destroy, a dream that we had by wanting to create a subdivision right next door.
Thank you for that. We have others wishing to speak. There we go. Same thing, give your, your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Mi nombre es Aurelio Barrón. La dirección es a 2205 Hafield. Y este, pues no estoy de acuerdo en que hagan los, los lotes más chiquitos. Este, en lugar de hacerlos más pequeños, ¿por qué no lo hacen el doble de grandes? Y hacen, en lugar de 40 casas, hacen 20. Y a la mejor agarra las mismas tasas y menos gente, menos problemas. Porque las veces que vengo al, al lote quiero construir el próximo año ahí, en ese lote. Pero las pocas veces que vengo ahí, este, casi todo el tiempo me toca ver la policía o los bomberos al cruzar la calle donde hay mucha gente junta. Este, yo pienso que entre más gente junta, más problemas para todos. Es todo. Gracias.
So I'm going to give you a brief translation of what he said. He is the owner of the 2205, which is adjacent to my property. And so he is against the proposed. He is the owner of the 2205, which is adjacent to my property, and so he is against the proposed rezoning, and he's recommending that instead of you going smaller, you go larger. There's the subdivision across the street and around the corner that are larger subdivisions, and you get more money out of those million-dollar homes that are around the corner. So with that as well, we have a lot of traffic, and he's always seen that the police department and the fire department, because we do have other subdivisions around us, that it's always a traffic issue as well. So he hopes to build within the next year, but that is something to consider is to keep our, the integrity of what Crawford subdivision was developed for. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you for the interpretation greatly. Third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll turn it over to questions, comments, concerns from City Council. Anything? Remember Camp Car?
John, I see that member, this is a 3-2 item, so we have to get, was it mayor six of seven?
Six, yeah.
At least six. What were the concerns? You recall, I wasn't at that meeting, that was, we were here, but that was expressed in terms of why they went against. I feel like it's a fairly standard zone change, but...
Well, the 3 to 2 did not kick in the supermajority. That is a, that was a positive recommendation. It was protest by neighboring property owners.
Those within the 200 feet.
Yeah, so if...
Correct.
Caused them to trip the wire.
Correct.
So it was about, it was about traffic, it was about density, it was about effects on the school system. Realistically, yes, it is, as our understanding, a maximum of six additional homes that could be placed in here based on the 10-foot reduced...
Yeah, 20 is the threshold, and it was 28% of those in the 200-foot radius that...
And do you recall what Dansby and Eisenberg, I mean, they could have easily voted 5-0 and then let this tripwire happen with the percentage of land? Was there a specific argument that they advanced that made them cast? I mean, they're fairly deliberative members.
The chair, chairperson Dansby spoke to maintaining R2 zoning to better connect with the character of the area. Commissioner Eisenberg discussed the difference. I think he just felt like the same, that a R2 worked for the area. So, I mean, a subdivision can be built today, R2, zoning is R2, so the owner has the right to go in there and put what we expect to be approximately 36 homes without any approval other than his development plans. This is, as was pointed out earlier, a request to allow what would potentially be a maximum of six homes, but based on the development layout, you know, well, I don't know what that would come to, but it would be roughly in that six-home area.
I had not heard of the 28%, the 20, and that was a new thing. When the residents of the community, two neighbors come and speak, I mean, that speaks volumes, and, I mean, damn, somebody said my forever home is going to be destroyed. I take a certain amount of credibility with that. I mean, if the neighborhood was what it was, and you've made the investment in time and energy and raised your family here, traffic happens. Development, I work in land development, I understand what this is, but usually I'm buying a gigantic piece of land from a farmer, and the farmer is overjoyed for me to come here and do that, and that's the trade-off. But this is not the case by any stretch.
I would point out that this is going to be the majority of what the development in Pearland is going to be in the future, right?
100%.
Outside of the southern Massey Oaks area and that property, most of what's going to be in is development, it's going to be the smaller tracks such as this, maximizing those to benefit the overall valuation issue for the city.
And John, I agree with you, progress happens, but I hate to say it, these people were here first. I don't know how else to say it. That makes a difference, and we, it would be different if these people had neighbors coming and saying they're very, very in favor of this. I hear one person, I got two different groups saying the same thing. I'm just not going to get there. If you get six votes, great, happy for you, but, you know, I would feel very similar to these families if I had put that time and investment in there. So I'm just not going to get there, but I imagine others may, so.
Mayor, if I may, is there other R3 zoning in that area?
Further up, Hatfield, just, just up north of Hatfield, you do have subdivision that's in the...
It's mostly R2 in that specific area.
Yeah, but if you go north, out to Hatfield, Orange and Hatfield, go north, forget the name of the subdivision, it's on the left-hand side, that's an R3 subdivision.
That means spot zoning at that point? If it's just that one little patch of R2?
That, I don't know, it's been there, that R3's been there for...
Gosh. No, I'm talking about this, if we, if we approve this...
That's a question for...
Would that be...
If we did R3 here, would that be classified as spot zoning?
Spot zoning, if it's that one little patch of R3 in the middle of...
No, that would not qualify as a spot zoning case. I think if you had a drastic change from what is in the land use plan, but R3 is substantially similar to that, you're talking 10-foot difference.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think the compelling piece for me is that it's, they're already allowed to build a neighborhood here, the difference in the homes is minimal. I think there was a comment that said something about the larger lot sizes typically yield more value, but I think that's the opposite. I think it's smaller lot sizes, and I've seen a shift, I've spoken about this quite often, that if we continue to just build gigantic houses that are out of reach for the everyday person, no one's going to be able to afford to live in Pearland as it is. If we just focus on building million-dollar homes, only millionaires can live here. And I'm typically not okay with that, so I'm fine with this zone change, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? John, real quick, I know they have a, this isn't a plat, it's not a formal plat, they do have a site plan in the, in here, do, there's some problems with some of these lots. I mean, some of them are, look to be 60 by, right at 100, just over 100. Does that meet the definition of a, of an R3? Is it 6,000 or is it 6,600?
It's 60 by 90 with a minimum of 6,000 square feet.
Okay.
Well, these shouldn't be based on that.
And then, and then secondly, the other ones, they're, they're under 60 feet, the ones that are heading north and south, they're like 58 and a quarter, 58, don't even meet the minimum 60. And again, this isn't a plat, but this is driving the numbers of lots that we're hearing tonight.
Oh, exactly, and so that simple check of the math means they probably lose one lot on that one row to make all this go. But it would, again, this is just for the zoning, and any proposed project would have to go through the development review process.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I hear, you know, some of what's going on, and, and I mean, Castle Rock's a known builder, I know the guys at Castle Rock very well. Generally speaking, I'm also a residential development professional as well, it's been my career for the last 20 years. Shallower lots are typically not market-driven, these being right around 100 feet. Most people are wanting deeper today, so it's surprising that Castle Rock would want that. I also know they want to be in Pearland, and I get, I get that. The deeper lots on the other side, I mean, I get that, that should be deeper. I just think it's a tough piece of property to do this, even if it's a 70-foot wide lot. I don't really know where and how you get the depth that's necessary to make this happen, but I'm not going to be voting on it, so, but I'll give you my opinion on it. Remember Owens?
Yeah, I was just looking at this property here, and how many homes are we looking at to be built on this property?
42.
42. Okay. You see, there's going to be onsite for indoor detention for that area there. And the other thing is, on where we're looking into our storm sewer, do we have the capacity to carry the additional load through there within existing storm sewer, or is there something that we, as a city, going to have to do to increase that capacity for the storm sewer?
Good question. I'm assuming they have capacity in all those covered.
Councilman Owen, with regards to that, is that they will have onsite detention in requirements to comply with our engineering design criteria manual, they have to only handle pre and post, they have to handle the post-construction flow for impervious cover, they're only allowed to discharge at a rate equal to pre-construction flows, and I'll go ahead and let Raj Sureshta, our city engineer, add to that if there's anything else.
Thank you, Robert. Just to add on to what you just said, there is existing BDD4 ditch on the eastern side of the property, so the proposed developer needs to get approval from BDD4 to discharge the flow into their ditch, because majority of this area flows into existing ditch along the east side of the property.
Any other questions, comments? Remember Camp Car?
For the people that are going about to have their dream destroyed, you should very much listen to those comments on the video. If you don't win here, go to BDD4.
All right, so any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we're going to draw close to this public hearing number three, move to new business item number three. Member Carbone, would you present that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-240, so moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. We've had staff report, questions, comments from council. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Representative Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Remember Camp Car?
Nay.
Remember Hernandez?
Aye.
Remember Cade?
No.
Remember Barry?
Aye.
Remember Owens?
Aye.
Remember Coza?
Nay.
Motion fails four to three.
Four to three, so therefore, well, yeah, it got four votes in favor, but it fails because it had to have six votes. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
That's correct, okay. So with that, we will move to consent agenda. Remember Coza, if you would present the consent agenda with the exceptions of items E and I.
Consideration and possible action, resolution...
That helps the... There you go. All right. Consideration and possible action and consent agenda with the exceptions of items E and I.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Remember Coza?
Aye.
Representative Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Remember Camp Car?
This was with exceptions, E and I? Aye, yes.
Remember Hernandez?
Aye.
Remember Cade?
Aye.
Remember Barry?
Aye.
Remember Owens? Motion passes seven to zero.
I didn't pull it, I don't know. All right, with that, we do, if council would concur, I'd like to go ahead and dispense of these two items. I know we have a consultant on the cultural arts master plan that's supposed to be here tonight, we'd like to go ahead and dispense of that, and I know, I'm not sure on E, would y'all have a concurrence in just going to moving that up? I'm going to go right to item six after that. No issue? All right. Remember Cade, would you present item E as an echo, real quick?
Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2022-200, so moved.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this is the annual appropriation and purchase order for our meters that we need for new construction-like, with the supply chain issues, are anxious to get this order placed and then build up our stockpiles, we have those available, nothing to add.
Real quick, that's like for new construction?
Yeah, it's the residential 5/8s kind of things, correct me if I'm wrong?
Correct, this is for our new construction as it goes in, so we can continue to provide metering services to them, so 5/8, 3/4, all the way up to 6 and 8-inch.
Okay. Who pulled this? Remember Camp Car? Yeah.
We had a locked-in number on the expenditure, and I just want to say, we are not in the rapid-growth phase that we were earlier in the last decade, we're in a more developed, mature state. If we don't utilize, I'm guessing this has set off a certain number of anticipated meters. If, what is that number, and if we don't hit it, does the number move, or are we locked in at a base?
So that's why it says the estimated is a unit price, and we do exactly what you said, we order them as we need them, but as I also said, we're going to build up the stockpiles so that they're available, we don't get behind.
Where is like, I guess, success? If we're going to build the stockpile, so to speak, where's like the success?
Inventory, what do you want to have? So we'll have inventory on hand, also they're long lead items, so we want to get that order in so that we can be, what's it, forecasted in the market, so that then we can get that inventory built. We also have Massey Oaks coming online, we have those areas that are going to need that inventory, and so we plan that. We're seeing probably about a four, I'm going to say three to four-month window before we get meters, so we need to start getting in that queue, otherwise that inventory lasts longer.
And what is our base number that we need to buy at the front end of that? Like, what's the minimum? Obviously, I know we're stockpiling, but I'm assuming there's a day-one order, 50, 60, 100?
So we'll project out, but however, because of the fact that we need to get this in for inventory and forecasting, we'll look at putting in a larger order, could be in the 500 to what we project here to 1,040. Some of the larger meters are eight months out on ordering, so we've got to get these items in for forecasting.
And what budget item is this coming, what water meters could go in one fund, it could go in the general, I mean, what, where is the dollars for this?
Water meters are associated with the revenue fund, associated with water and sewer revenue fees, but they are also net neutral because we are reimbursed when these are purchased. They are then purchased by the customer. So it's a revenue-neutral.
All right, cool. Any other questions, comments? Good questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Remember Cade?
Aye.
Remember Barry?
Aye.
Remember Owens?
Aye.
Remember Coza?
Aye.
Representative Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Remember Camp Car?
Aye.
Remember Hernandez?
Stepped out.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, with that, remember Barry, would you present item I as an igloo?
Sure, Mayor, thank you very much. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2022-253, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff, staff report?
Just briefly, Mayor, as the item describes, we have, and you've helped with this greatly, Mayor, done independent interviews with a variety of our cultural arts stakeholders around the community. From that, one of the uptakes was that we'd be well-served by having an actual plan to guide work in this space, and so there was a process to vet different people, professional firms that have done this exact kind of work, and that was undertaken with the assistance of our Convention Visitors Bureau staff primarily. Would note that the source of funds on this is the CVB monies, they do have a requirement, but a percentage of monies are from CVB type revenues, hotel-motel, that are supposed to go towards the arts, and so this is a very eligible expense for that. So this has been recommended and for your consideration tonight.
All right, thank you for that. Remember Carbone, I believe you pulled this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, I appreciate all the background and clear the needs there through all the listening sessions, so I'm completely in support of this master plan, just I can't vote on the awarded vendor. I believe there's a difference between just an alignment on core values that I represent this community for, and so I think we'd be better served by a different awarding.
Any other questions, comments? Oh, remember Car?
Remember Carbone, I have an immense amount of respect for your points here, but this seems like a fairly innocuous award, and it's one of the mayor's priorities. Is there something, just so I can be more informed of your viewpoint, that causes heartburn?
I'll be happy to share that with you later, but not now.
Is it of a professional context?
Professional as a city councilman?
Yeah, in terms of, do they have... Yeah, in terms of, do they have thought he work, I guess? I just, I don't.
I can't speak to that.
Any other questions, comments for the record? Seeing none, Madam, oh, you just barely. Member Cade?
No, there's no reason.
Yeah. So, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Nay.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Nay.
Mayor Tim Carbone?
No.
Member Campar?
Abstain.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
No.
The motion fails two to four.
With that, we're going to move to new business item number six. Bring that up to the front there. We'll call on them after staff. All right, with that, I'll put this just kind of out there. This is a discussion item. Staff presentation with city council input and discussion, background impact, and options related to corrections to taxable value related to the adopted FY twenty-three budget. I also want to open this up with an introduction of a couple of elected officials in the room. And I want to thank our Commissioner Stacy Adams for being present tonight, as well as our tax assessor collector, Kristen Bullenek, being here as well. And thank you for both for being here tonight. Kristen, thank you very much for being here. If we have questions, comments through the evening, may call on you for some of that. We'll have a full staff report here in just a moment. But for, for those listening in and in the room, we've had a calculation of our values change from when we did our budget here just several months ago or a month ago to today. And it's, it's a rather drastic change in our value and causing certainly an issue with our budget and our budget, budgetary revenues that we were anticipating. So, you know, this was found almost by happenstance because we were looking to create TERS number three, calling for values once again. And those values, when they came back in from the county, didn't really match up with what we had before, causing a lot of alarms to go off here about 10 days ago. And so we're, you know, now going to be in a, in a position of having about a $10 million shortfall. And that's what this discussion is about. Josh, if you would, I did put in a supplement earlier today. And, you know, at points in times like this, this is when, you know, the council needs to heed and listen, understand, get the facts, really understand what happened here. How do we continue to, how do we move forward? What role do various people play? So I, this is a kind of a, not an exhaustive list of questions, but certainly questions that need to be asked and answered. Did give this earlier today to staff. Some of this, council, you got it in the supplemental email that came out shortly after noon, but we need to find out what happened. We need to find out what role, if any, our CAD's central appraisal districts, both Brazoria, mainly Harris County, because this is all going to be in Harris County, but Brazoria, Fort Bend, and Harris, what role do they play each and every year? What role, if any, did our tax office play? What role, if any, did our own city staff play? What verification processes are in place for checks and balances to make sure that this is right? Should city staff have caught this? Was it something that we should have inherently seen and jumped on? What action items should come out of this to make sure that this doesn't happen again? Not only action items for our staff, but action items for the council to contemplate? What role, if any, can city council play in moving forward? What role do we as policyholders or policymakers need to be in, in moving forward? What needs to happen with the tax worksheets to improve it? If you'll recall back during the budgetary times, we openly said there was a problem with the worksheet. We, we knew something was wrong. We couldn't put our finger on it. I said it from the dinos. I know a city manager said it. I know our staff, staff said it, but we couldn't put our finger on what it was. The tax worksheet itself is complicated. Ms. Bullenek can, can certainly attest to that. And, and so, you know, what can we do to improve that worksheet? We have legislators that go to Austin, and we certainly will be having discussions with them on how, if any. And we invite the county to be a part of that process as we discuss with our legislators how we improve this worksheet. Are there best practices? We look at best practices on all kinds of things. This should be no different. What best practices and protocols are out there that we could use, that we could draw on, that we could do a better job here? What did the council, it's interesting, what changed? What did the county tax office see or do differently when the request was made two weeks ago because of the potential TERS number three? What changed to make it different? And then last question that I have here, and there's going to be many more from, from council, but in light of this, what does this do for the debt service rates when contemplating a bond election in May of 2023? I'd rather be asking that and getting that question asked and answered today as opposed to, here we're trying to get that ready to go to the voters in, you know, January or February and, and understand how this is going to affect us. So in light of that, I, I'm going to turn it over to staff for their presentations. I think a lot of questions may get asked and answered in the process of that. What I'm going to ask council to do, unless you just have a, a quick clarifying, what did you say? Like you didn't hear something or that type of thing, let's allow the staff to kind of get through the presentation because a lot of your, I think, inherent questions may be answered. The presentation itself going through, it's not a exhaustive presentation. So with that, I want to turn it over to staff for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, for that setup, and appreciate that. Just to get into it, I'll take the first set here. We did send out, you know, we, we met about this internally on Wednesday and got you the agenda item on Friday, and so we were able to share that out. But this slide is a, a new one that we're going to build upon, frankly, because I think it's a pretty straightforward diagnosis of the process as it exists, part of the process, I should say, and, you know, where the issue is that you, you just mentioned and talked about and where that came in. But, you know, basically, you know, the, the different appraisal districts gather the information. They, it's compiled by and reported into the worksheet by Brazoria County Tax Office. And then the next step is back to the city and how we use it. So we'll build on this, but I thought this would be a good thing just to set up and explain that process. So just start off with what's not affected by our discussion here tonight. The tax rate is set, that will not change. So that was adopted by the council based upon the information that was made available. And, you know, that's locked in, bills have gone out. So the, frankly, the city rate that was adopted is lower than it would have been otherwise, but that's, that, that's set now. And so correspondingly, the amounts will not change as well, but the, the city is going to collect that money based upon that rate and the values that are there, et cetera. We have also, I want to note that the TERS administrative charge, it's a big piece of our budget here locally, is, is not affected. And then just to be clear, nothing on the enterprise fund side is changing. Water sewer rates are not impacted. The fund itself is not impacted. What is changing? The amount of revenue generated from property taxes to the city general fund and debt backed, debt, debt tax backed debt fund will be much less than budgeted. General fund expenditures and fund balance and the property deck side both have changes to both expenditures and fund balance. We have received from Brazoria County Tax Office, a corrected no new revenue rates, and we'll touch on the results of that later here. That provides what the no new revenue and voter approval rates for twenty-three would have been. And so we'll be asking them, and if necessary, you know, if whoever, if they're locked in, we'll talk legislatively because we believe strongly that should be the basis for twenty-four when it comes to unused increments. So that's looking down the road a little bit. So again, just really high level, the property tax process, pair lands somewhat unique, but not entirely. But we do stretch across three counties, Brazoria obviously being the primary, but we also have significant value in Harris and Fort Bend. Again, each county appraisal district gathers the information on assessed values and other values, market value, et cetera, for the properties in their jurisdiction. That goes to Brazoria County as our primary, and they take that and assemble that into the tax rate calculation worksheets that you're going to hear a lot about tonight as we go forward. And then they provide, Brazoria County Tax Office provides that worksheet to us, just as they do for the other local government jurisdictions across the county. When we had that worksheet, we referenced that in the budget discussion several times and talked about that and the complexities and the impact of that. We also include that for the council in that original budget binder. So what is this worksheet we keep talking about? It is mandated by state statute when it comes to that. And so the tax office has no latitude, can't make things up or changes to that. They provide, it contains the information that they use to calculate from the values, the no new revenue and the voter approval tax rates, and also our debt service rates. The appraisal districts, again, collect that information that goes in there. We as staff ask questions, we do, and you'll, you'll hear about that, but we don't modify the worksheet. That's not our document, and that's not our purview and our bailiwick. We run the math in parallel. We've been doing that for a few years. We've developed a spreadsheet to mirror, mirror that worksheet. And so we do that just to check math. You know, it's a big, complicated document, lots of pieces, so it's to be expected, and as many different jurisdictions as there are across the county, we point out issues or errors, but the, the numbers belong to ultimately to the, the tax office. And just to note that the process is the same that's been used in the past years. SB two did change the, the rules a couple of years ago, but, you know, it's essentially the same process with the gathering and et cetera, et cetera. And so that's been used, it's nothing brand new this year that has always before properly estimated the revenue that, that are used in our budgets here. So getting in more specific, July 29 is when we received the worksheet that we used in the developing the FY twenty-three budget. And this just snippets, but it shows, you know, the no new revenue rate that was produced of 54 cents and the voter approval rate is 63. That's what we reported out to you. And then the total taxable value was the $11 billion. The debt service is a component of the total, and that was at 34 cents. So obviously, as those of you who've been around city budgets for a while, it is a critical document that sets the foundation for at least the property tax portion of our discussions that follow after that. So following that a little bit deeper, in July, when we got that, at the end of July, the values on that certified worksheet, and we tied those out in a couple of ways you'll hear about, was the $13.6 billion. And then there was a line in there that will become the culprit here, that was shown as values that are under protest or included, not, are included in the certified rule. And the numbers that they had to work with was the $1.3 billion. So now where we are, as you touched on, the, actually, the revised worksheet shows the certified values ticking up a little bit as settlements get made, et cetera, from what we saw before. But here's the, the rub, where as the 1.3 billion was reported originally, that is now being shown as properly $30 million. So that affects the bottom line for the values on which we have to apply our rates. And from there, I'll turn it over to Amy, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. So I'm going to talk a little bit about, excuse me, line 19B. A finance staff member contacted Brazoria County to get an updated value for the not yet certified values. And during that discussion, it became clear that all the not yet certified values were in Harris County and that Brazoria County would have to call them to get an update. The Brazoria County officials had originally been told by Harris County to use the $1.3 billion figure as the not yet certified value in the city's tax calculation worksheet. After Brazoria County discussed this with Harris County, then city staff were told that the not yet certified value was actually 30 million. So you can see a little bit from this email that we received from Brazoria County on the first of November. And the $30 million figure is used in the revised property tax calculation worksheet that you have. For Brazoria County officials, the Harris County officials had originally instructed them to use the $1.3 billion figure as the not yet certified value in the city's tax calculation worksheet. And we've put a snippet of that worksheet up on the screen for you so you can see in line 19B that they did as they were instructed by Harris County. After Brazoria County discussed this with Harris County, the city staff were told that the not yet certified value was $30 million. And you can see that that changed line 19B in the revised worksheet to that 30 million. So it was at this point that city staff began to try and confirm this massive change via email. So you can see that this email from Brazoria County in the blue, and then city staff was trying to clarify, am I understanding this correctly, that we're now using 30 million instead of the 1.6 billion? And she says, yes, that's correct. So how did this happen? What we've understood as finance staff is that Brazoria County was provided by Harris County two numbers, and Harris County instructed Brazoria County to use the 1.3 billion in line 19B. You'll see that there was a letter sent out when the values were certified on the 25th of July. Each appraisal district sends these letters out to the ma, to the mayor, and the number that's used here is the $1.6 billion. And the HCAD estimated taxable value of 1.6 billion does not appear as a separate line item in the tax calculation worksheet, but it's built into the certified values shown on page two, which is line 18A. The $13 billion in certified values is for all counties combined, and the tax calculation worksheet does not contain individual county information. So it's just one lump sum. And you can see that there in line 18A. Then what we've done is we've broken out, this bottom half is our internal spreadsheet that double checks the numbers were given by the county. As you can see where we've broken it out into the three counties, and we can see where those numbers add up to the certified values listed above. So everything appears to check out. So the 1.3 billion was used by Brazoria County Tax Office for not under protest, and that was the second number that was provided by Harris County to Brazoria County. The HCAD official sent this document to the city on the 26th of July and was recognized and provided the documentation for the worksheet, but it was not correlated to the total value component also in the worksheet. So you can see down at the bottom where line 19B, where that 1.3 was put in. Where is the HCAD taxable value of properties not under protest in the tax calculation worksheet? So it's on page three at line 19B. And again, you can see it here. And you can see in the bottom half is our city spreadsheet that compares the two. So you can see with a plus not yet certified, we have the 1.3, and then above in the tax worksheet, we have the 1.3. So those two match. And then, is this where you want me to point out the 11? So then you'll also notice that that $11 billion at the very bottom, the taxable value to the city, that is the number that we're trying to also reconcile to with the county. The original tax calculation worksheet lists certified values as 13 billion. Page two, section one, 18A, this number included 1.6 billion of values as per Page two, section one, 18A, this number included 1.6 billion of values as provided by HCAD. It also lists the 2022 value of properties not under protest or included on the certified roll as 1.3 billion. This resulted in a duplication of values provided by HCAD. These figures are used in calculating the amount of property taxes that will be raised from the proposed property tax rate shown in this screenshot below. So you can see that the three counties add up to the 13 billion found on the worksheet. And then the 1.3 in green down there is the problem because it was included again with what was shown above in the total. But the taxable value to the city, the 11 billion, again, matches page three on line 21, which was the total taxable value that we were trying to get to. Now I'll turn it over to Eric.
Thank you very much. The staff were working on calculating and updating some information for the TIRS number three discussion for city council. We were asked to look at the latest assessed value figures and provide any updates to changes. These numbers kind of change month to month, and you know, it was one of those, let's use the latest numbers for this, which is always a best practice. As we were doing this, we said, great, probably the best way to do this is to update the sheet that council is familiar with, right? So this is the sheet that appears in your budget book, and we just added a new column, and we added Brazoria County's numbers were exactly the same per updated reports, and you know, so was Fort Bend County's. Harris County's did decrease 140 million. This is in part due to Harris County not providing certified values in time for us to use them in our adoption. Instead, they provide estimated values, which were estimated at 1.6, and now they are at 1.4. So that is a thread that we can continue to talk about, but tonight, the larger discussion is what goes on this next line here, and the not yet certified, which went from that 1.3 billion figure. We needed to reach out to Brazoria County to ask, hey, what should this number be now that we're further into the year? And you know, we were expecting a similar figure, a little bit of movement's normal, but a similar figure. And that's when we learned, as you saw on a previous slide, that it's actually closer to 30 million. And that's what really got the ball rolling on, okay, we need to inform the CFO, we need to inform the city manager's office, the mayor, and immediately inform council, get it on the agenda. Brazoria County has since provided us an updated tax worksheet. The original tax worksheet came on, was sent to the city on July 29th. The new updated tax worksheet came in on the 3rd of November, about 7:30 at night. And what this little sheet here lays out is the lines in the tax calculation worksheet, so line 18A, 18D, et cetera. The original sheet, this is the figures we use to adopt the city's budget, the, what the revised tax calculation sheet using the corrected numbers looks like, as well as a column that shows you the change in dollars or cents when you're talking about property about taxes down here, as well as a percentage change. I'll walk you through some of the main things, just because there's a lot of numbers in this presentation and on the tax calculation sheet. The big takeaway right now is that this line 19B, right, it went from 1.3 billion to 30 million. And as that matriculates down, you can see here, the total taxable value went from a little bit over 11 billion to nine and a half billion. And then further on, as the tax worksheet makes some adjustments, you end up in line 25 with the adjusted 2022 taxable value for the city. Originally, this was $10.8 billion, and that's what we based the budget off of. It's since been revised to $9.2 billion, a decrease of about 14.4%. Interestingly, this amount, so this amount always gets translated into what's called your no new revenue rate, which brings in the same amount of money as you normally get in a year, as well as your voter approve rate, which is the max you can increase your property tax rate without going to voters and getting their approval directly through a public vote. The 2022 no new revenue rate, based off the old sheet, was 54 cents, which was a dramatic drop from where we were at. The updated tax sheet shows that the no new revenue rate should have been closer to 0.63, which is about nine cents higher. So our no new revenue rate, in reality, if we had had the accurate information, would have been significantly different. This is also true for the voter approved rate, and even the debt rate here would have increased from 34 cents to 40 cents. So at the end of the day, the no new revenue rate given to us should have been 0.63, and that with the unused amount should have been 0.73, that unused increment you sometimes hear about. We adopted a rate of 0.62, which is one cent, about one cent below what the no new revenue rate would have been using these updated values. What does this mean in terms of budget dollars? There are two funds primarily affected. The general fund has, was initially budgeted for about $36.6 million. This will decrease by $4.7 million in property tax revenue. The debt service fund will see a decrease in $5.6 million in revenue, for a total of $10.3 billion in revenue decreases through our property tax. When you find yourself in this situation, the first thing staff do is we turn to our financial management policies, which are always blessed by the city council, and there is a section in there for when you are operating in a deficit, and how do you resolve that? As you can see here, things like deferral of capital equipment purchases, expenditure reductions, deferrals on PGO, there's a number of options available to council, and at any given time, depending on the issue, you can always come up with a menu of these that help meet the issue and resolve it to council and the public satisfaction. Staff review the property tax calculations during the budget creation process very closely. So after receiving the tax rate calculation on July 29th at 4:14 PM, it arrives in our inbox. About 20 minutes later, at 4:37 PM, staff respond, hey, thank you for getting this to us. This is a super critical document for the city. We're off to the races once we get it. But right away, staff said, hey, this is a really big decrease from the current tax rate. Are you able to tell us what is driving this? Is it just that big of an increase in taxable values? Brazoria County extremely responsive just a few minutes later. Hey, I have checked this calculation three times because of the decrease in the rate. So the county saw this rate, our no new revenue rate go way down and said, hey, this is weird to us, too. They checked it three times, that gave us some confidence in it. The large increase is due to value increases. Comparing the numbers between 2021 and 2022, everything's pretty much aligned between the years, except for the almost 3 billion in increased value coming onto the roll. Let me know if you have questions. We asked, staff then asked, are some of the other cities in the county seeing this big decrease as well? We asked that about an hour later. And again, a very quick response from the county. Hey, we are one of the first to be calculated, which we always appreciate. We get our numbers first. The county, so you know, they hadn't seen other cities yet. However, the county is looking at a five cent decrease, which would have been the largest decrease in recent memory for the county's no new revenue rate as well. So, okay, the county at least is an organization is also seeing the same sort of no new revenue rate decrease that we are seeing. City staff regularly ask questions, and Ms. Bolognick can certainly attest to this, that we're not shy about asking questions repeatedly to make sure we understand. This is a pretty typical example of, hey, you know, we see that the collection rate is 102% or 103%. What does that mean? How do you collect more property tax? And here you can see a very good explanation from the county, giving back in a very timely manner of, here's exactly how it works, you know, and that's a good answer. I didn't pull all the emails, because they'd be kind of superfluous, but staff regularly ask questions every year as we work with the county to understand this information. On August 1st at 3:23 PM, we asked a question about the tourism TIF values. It was a technical question. Brazoria County responded with what we expected. We were kind of just making sure every, we were on the same page there. Staff then responded the next day around 9:00 AM, hey, this makes sense. It's what we thought you were going to say. Thanks for being so responsive. Brazoria County gets back to us again quickly and said, provided a little bit more information to what they were seeing in other cities as they send out tax information, that those other cities and jurisdictions were seeing large decreases in their no new revenue rate as well. And when we say large decreases in the no new revenue rate, what is driving that are these increases in valuation. So you know, we, we saw this coming, but at the same time, the county and all the other cities we're hearing are also seeing significant decreases.
Eric, real quick, I want to add to the public, that's on August the 2nd. We received our budget binders on August the 5th. And as far as the timing is concerned, they're trying to get that binder and everything else out to us. So you know, between then, I mean, there was three more days, and we're receiving that budget book on our doorstep. So, thank you.
In this situation, staff's first priority, step number one, is to ensure the adequate funding in the tax-backed debt service fund. Debt service payments must be made. There's not flexibility there. This fund will have a decrease in property tax revenue of approximately $5.6 million. We can use reserves, or we can transfer money from the general fund to shore up that fund. Expenditures do not have flexibility, right? These are debt payments. It's like flexibility for your mortgage. It'd be nice, but it's not there. However, we are looking and working with our financial advisors to look if, and see if restructuring bonds and certificates of obligations or refunding them could have potential savings for this year and offset the need to use reserves. However, there are going to be costs and other implications, so we don't want to be flippant with that, and we'll bring that forward to council when we have more information. The screenshot is from the FY 23 budget. It has not been updated to reflect the new property tax information just yet. Again, we were kind of racing to get this presentation together for today. However, the ending fund balance is estimated to be almost $5.4 million in this fund. The fund has a 10% reserve policy as well. So providing a very general outline, you know, we're not, we're not at the point, we're still in the fact discovery mode like the mayor talked about, but one way this funding gap could be addressed is to use $3.25 million in reserves. We would need a, that would dip us below the 10% policy. Is there a question? Okay, sorry. Would this, this would drop us below the 10% policy. However, we would just need to have a plan to bring it back up above the policy. And then using refundings or restructurings for about $2.3 million, and that would shore up the fund this year. Step number two is to adjust the general fund revenues and expenditures. The general fund will have a $4.7 million decrease in property tax revenue. We can shore this up with the use of reserves by using ARPA funding and bringing it over via forest account labor or another method into the general fund by reducing streets and sidewalk capital investment this year, and then revisiting it mid-year and, you know, appropriating sales taxes or items like other revenue sources to those items. We are also awaiting the FY 22 close. This is when we get good information on how much money we actually spent in FY 22 and that might be available for FY 23. It's kind of a new, fresh set of numbers for us, and that'll give us a better idea of, do we have more money in the bank, you know, 100,000 more, 500,000 more, hopefully not anything less than we thought. This is from the FY 23 budget book. The property tax revenue line has not been updated yet. However, the ending fund balance was projected to be $29 million. That's $1.8 million over the city council's 90-day policy for reserves. So right now, you are at about maybe 96 days in reserves is what we're projecting, and the policy is 90 days. Using those reserves and the amount of $3.9 million, and again, you would have to develop a policy to get that back up to a full 90 days, as well as utilizing some ARPA funding and bringing that over from the general fund by removing the permitting software and doing that at a later time, utilizing the remaining fund balance in the ARPA fund, and reallocating some unprogrammed, uncommitted, and unallocated community grants for nonprofits in $156,000, for $156,000. These can be covered with other grants such as the CDBG coronavirus relief funds. So again, this is illustrative of sort of the scope and one way to address it. Sales taxes do remain strong, and again, with that close in a few months, we'll have much more information on where we ended FY 22 and what the fund balance for FY 23 is. Looking at the general fund, how does this change fund balance and reserves? Fund balances were adopted at $29 million, and we have about $1.8 million over policy currently projected. Using the amount of reserves that we suggested on the previous page, that would decrease to 83 days of reserves. You could also, if you wanted to keep more things in the budget, you could use less reserves, or sorry, you could use more reserves. If the city council doesn't wish to go down to 83 days and is more comfortable with 85 days or 86 days, they can do that as well by using less reserves. Next steps is with budget amendment number one, normally this amendment is just carryover items, which are items that were budgeted for in FY 22, and we have a, you know, a purchase order in hand, and we're going to handle them in FY 23. We just haven't gotten them yet. Those, that's what normally budget amendment number one is for, but we are going to be using budget amendment number one to also address this issue and sort of right-size and fix the revenue issues, as well as balancing any expenditures as directed to by city council. And of course, next steps, we know there's going to be additional questions. We're happy to answer those. We probably won't have all the answers tonight, but we're committed to making sure we get them answered for you. With that, I'll hand it back to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, so this is that sheet I opened up with, just to, you know, bring it back to the immediate issue and try to explain as best we could the causes and effects and the beginnings, very beginnings of a workout solution. I would suggest that, you know, that next steps and some discussions earlier today, that rather than November 21, as we planned for the first budget amendment, we pushed that just a couple of weeks to December 5th. What that will do is allow our accounting side to have a little bit more time, they'll be precious for looking at close of FY 22, and so we can present that back to you, and that'll be better information. That'll allow us more time to talk to our financial advisor and develop solutions. And then I'd suggest, too, that we have a, we're presenting this tonight on the quick, but then have another discussion item on the 21st, I'm sorry, yeah, on the 21st for, you know, just additional feedback questions, where we're at, check in with you all before we bring that first amended on the December 5th. So, thank you, sir, for your attention.
All right. With that, before we do, Ms. Bolognick, I know you had submitted another, an email over to Kristin on some, not Kristin, to Amy, on some additional information, and I know we, we received that. I'd like to welcome you to say a few words and maybe introduce that, and as normal, introduce yourself for the tape and address and all that good stuff.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name's Kristin Bolognick. I am the Brazoria County Tax Assessor Collector. My address as well?
Yes.
Two Flounder Circle, Freeport. Again, thank you for having me. I did submit something earlier to gentlemen. I truly appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. As, as we have gone through, this is my second year as tax assessor collector, and second year of working with the city staff, we truly have a partnership. We, as I stated, you know, they ask questions, and we go back and forth, and that's what I'm here for. So it's definitely great working with them. They have a great, we have a great staff here. Secondly, I would like to commend the staff on the presentation. I think that it does a very good job of breaking down this complicated calculation. It is a lot of steps to it, and a lot of things that come from appraisal districts in the city that gets put into this calculation. But in addition to that presentation, I did submit a document to you guys. It's what we refer to, or not what we refer to, but HCAD, Harris County Appraisal District refers to as where to find the 2022 tax rate calculation data. This is what you received via email, I believe. And as you can see, the very top of it, it lists out actual controller worksheet line numbers, the description of that line number, and the source of what Harris County provides that says this is where you grabbed that number. And so if you look at 18A, which is about midway there, it tells you to refer to the 2601 estimate letter. And that is the letter that was highlighted and shown to you guys on slide 14 in the presentation. And that is the letter that was highlighted and shown to you guys on slide 14 in the presentation. As you go down to 19A, the 2022 taxable value of properties under protest, Harris County provides me with a report called the uncertified summary HTS. That is the number that was included in the calculation for 19A. And then for 19B, the, what Harris County calls their estimated value of properties, neither under protest nor included on the certified appraisal role. There's two different reports that they provide for that. One is called the uncertified summary other and the other is called the unsummary other PTS or uncertified summary PTS. Those two reports are added together to put in line 19B. So, as Harris County Appraisal District has instructed me to utilize the reports and information that they provide me as how the calculation was done. As moving forward, what we've seen now unfortunately is that these instructions work beautifully if you have a certified appraisal role. If you are utilizing the certified estimate, these instructions and sources do not work. They overstate value. And that is where we are today. I would like to second what Eric was explaining earlier is that the new calculation has been provided with a new, no new revenue rate. And that no new revenue rate is the .634439. The county, I'm sorry, the city adopted a tax rate of .623765. So, one cent under what would have been your no new revenue rate. So, what the city adopted is truly a property tax savings to the citizens of the city of Pearland.
All right. Thank you for that, Kristin. If we have some questions, I'm sure we'll have you back up to the podium here just a second. And before turn it over to council, I think Clay had mentioned one of the changes in the next steps. So, prior to this meeting, the audit committee met with staff to kind of go through this and take a look at what would be good next steps to make sure that we, whatever we do in amending this budget, that we get it right, we do it efficiently. And one of the things we had talked about was instead of bringing it back in two weeks, let's bring it back in the first meeting in December. The real difference, because it'll take two readings of the ordinance, is a week. So, instead of adopting a second ordinance of that amendment on December the 5th, it would be December the 12th, be difference of one week. But in its place on the 21st, see where and how, where we are in this process of amending. Our financial advisor, John Robuck, is out of town due to a family emergency. And we certainly want him here as well to be able to answer some questions. We'll have that, him available on the 21st in order to do that. So, and the other reason for kicking it just a little bit into December is it gives our staff just to be able to finalize the books for '22, knowing a little bit about what dollars may be available from '22 to move forward with this. Historically, when we close our books at the end of the year, we may have 750 to a million five in dollars there that we can then use should we need to. One of the things that staff's going to be looking for tonight is they have given you a proposal, if you will, to really draw down on reserves. If you'll recall, two or three years ago, there was a handful of you available. Our reserve policy was 60 days, not 90. We would still be above that 60 day, certainly be below 90. But one of the things that they've mentioned is that as a possible way to work through this, which would have minimal impact on really budgetary items. Some of the things discussed in the audit committee meeting specifically because it's finding certain items that we can cut from the budget to make it amenable. One of the things we did discuss, even though it's being funded out of ARPA, we could turn some of those dollars, again, into this. It was the $300,000 that we had for the UDC rewrite. We've gone since 2005 with the UDC. If we go another year, we go another year. We can take that $300,000 from ARPA and reallocate it, if you will, to these types of items. Joel, that would be obviously in your bailiwick that we would have to probably amend the plan that we've submitted and those types of things, but that's one thing that we discussed. As well as if we do draw down on reserves and sales tax comes in, as we, we hope it does and we revisit it in mid-year, May-June timeframe, my recommendation would be to replenish reserves with any overage. If we're drawing it down and going under fund or under policy, anything we can to make that up, that's what we should do to put any of those sales tax dollars back into reserves to make this, to make this work. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to the other two members of the audit committee for some comments and questions and see where we go. We're going to open it up to council.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, like Ms. Bolognick said, I think staff's done a good job about presenting what happened. And it looks clear and obvious, 2020 hindsight. So, thank you for pulling that together. I think it's been five days. I think I probably still have more questions than, than answers at this point. And really I look forward to, if I heard you right, Mayor, we'll, we'll still have input and discussion next week, next time we meet on the 21st with the financial advisor here, so we can talk through the debt implications. Yeah, and I know staff has kind of given their first, their first round at this. Again, within the five days of figuring out what's going on. So, I think we still need to work some more as to kind of what the plan is. But I think we're headed down the right path, but this is so reminiscent of the whole water billing issue. We're going to be talking about this for a while now. Thanks for letting me lead that off.
My pleasure. Now, I really do appreciate the expedient work on, on getting all this stuff together. And Ms. Bolognick, I appreciate you, all your, you and your team's work in getting all this stuff done in such a timely manner. Because as you can see, we have a pretty substantial underrun in our budget upcoming. We had a good meeting today. We, I feel like we, we understand exactly what happened. I know that there's going to be a lot of work in the background of you guys trying to figure out how to redo the formula to make sure that we have taken into consideration uncertified numbers from Harris County, which I understand from Eric has been somewhat of an ongoing mystery with 140 million over the years. But nonetheless, I think some of the things that we talked about, and the mayor hit on some of those, UDC putting that off a little bit, in rearranging some of the way that we shuffle some of the ARPA funding, that's going to help out too as well. I hate to say this, but, you know, drainage, we had two crews of three that we were hiring this year. Maybe staggering those crews and being able to hire through one crew and then mid-year hire the second crew. We were going to wait on equipment for those anyway, it seemed like. So, that seems to be somewhat of a consideration. And then of course, John Robuck, hopefully he gets back in a timely manner. We can, we can talk about restructuring some of our debt to help in that area. Although we do have, you know, interest rate implications associated with that makes it a little bit tougher these days, but maybe not as much bang for the buck. And then of course, some of the carryovers and sales tax, hopefully our sales tax numbers coming a little bit higher than anticipated. So, we have a lot of moving parts. I'm okay with moving it back to the December timeline. I don't necessarily think we need to beat a dead horse and figure out, you know, what happened. I think now we just need to work on solutions and making sure that we move forward and get to the end of this solution and move on to the next. So, again, not happy about it. I didn't, I didn't live the two or three years of misery with the water billing debacle and I certainly don't plan to live two or three years with this one. So, anyway, that's all I've got, Mayor.
All right. Thank you for that. Members of council, questions, comments, concerns, open it up. Remember Hernandez?
I guess I'll kind of get in this so I can go to the back and sniffle back there, stop bugging everybody. This was a lot of information and when I first saw this, it was just like, what? Really blew my mind. I know that we have had issues, at least the four years I've been here, with Harris County providing our values to us in a timely manner. It's good that I think I have a better understanding of what the process is now. I guess in looking through some of this, I'll say that I don't want to give a lot of direction tonight, Mayor, as far as where we should, you know, make up the difference. I know there were recommendations presented. And as you said, Mayor, my first thought was, you know, we did have a policy previously of 60 days. We draw it down because I don't want to make sacrifices and infrastructure, things like that that we've, you know, especially with the drainage stuff. I think that program is going to be a game changer for our city moving forward, getting those crews out there and keeping things cleaned out. And then that would kind of force us as we do move forward and we see. And luckily, we've been pretty fortunate here recently with an increase or more sales tax revenue than we have anticipated. And hopefully that continues. And that'll force us to be a little bit more thoughtful about spending if we draw the reserves down a little bit more because we would want to build that, that balance back up to our policy. And I have no, no issue with that, moving forward, being more thoughtful about how we spend. I'll say that, you know, when we kind of first came into this, there were several different iterations and versions of the budget from various members and things like that. So, I think, you know, we've got a couple of things to work on. I don't want to get too deep into the weeds tonight. But I, I don't want to commit us to cutting streets and sidewalks and stuff like that. I'd rather personally look at drawing down the fund balance a little bit more and then trying to make that up a little bit more aggressively as we move forward. That's just kind of my general thought on how to make up the difference. As far as the process and all of that, Ms. Bolognick, I really appreciate you being here. It's, it's got to be rough to get something like this and, you know, have to come and, and, you know, talk to us and walk us through all of this. And I imagine your office is pretty stressed out by this. You had mentioned, and I maybe seen some heads kind of not fully understanding that other cities saw a decrease in their no new revenue calculations as well. So, maybe that was the reason why the overstatement of value didn't seem out of the ordinary. Is that a correct summation of what you?
I calculate for 57 different entities. And so, when you look at Presoria County across, we had some cities with 40% increase in value, some cities with 10%, 20%. So, it was across the board. So, for me, when I looked at 21 versus 22, the numbers, we noticed that jump out, but then we saw huge increases in values across the county.
Okay. And, but I guess the question is that maybe is the reason why it didn't seem kind of out of the ordinary when the sheet was prepared? Okay. And then I guess from the staff side of things, I was just kind of generally thinking through this. And I know from the council perspective, we are, you know, pretty high level with this. But on the Harris County portion, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, except for like, I don't know the total breakdown of the values, but with a lot of the residential portion, I mean, there's a cap on that. Did, did that ever enter the conversation as far as knowing that the value would increase by X and knowing that we've got X number of commercial properties versus residential and kind of having that expectation?
Let me take a first crack at that. I'm, so you've got to keep in mind that the worksheet just shows a gross number. We illustrated that. We break that out ourselves to try to tie it out and provide that rationale. And so, you know, the Harris County proper number that was reported was on the same scale as was. But we've also had a separate uncertified number that was equivalent. So, you know, that was on scale. So, there was, and we were all reading about and saw examples of, you know, values going up. We know residential's going up plus 10, was capped at 10, but then the commercial isn't capped. So, there.
Right. That's what I'm asking. Do we have an idea of what the proportions are that maybe would have caused us to say what's going on?
I mean, by that, exactly. We, we know that though there are, residential's the bulk of it, that's all going up 10, right? And, you know, more non-residential in Harris probably. So, just in general terms. So, yeah, we do have that and have general themes of that, the trajectory of that, how that's going. So.
Okay. And then one last clarifying question, I'll be done, Mayor. On the, when you were going over the rate sheet, the one part that maybe if you could provide a little bit more clarification is where you said the, the 1.3 was duplicated, like it was, it was in the previous calculation, I guess it was duplicated. Can you kind of explain that in a little more detail?
I will try. So, when, according to Harris County Appraisal District, in line 18A, that is where they reported the 1.6 billion that is considered to be certified as of when we get the certified estimate. And then when you move to 19B, that is where they say, well, here's your properties that are neither under protest and they're not on the certified appraisal role. And we take those two numbers out of them together to put in 19B. The problem is, is that some of that value that is reported there in 19B is also in 18A.
Okay. Are we, I guess, are you notified of that? How do you figure out how to extrapolate the value?
That's that document that I showed earlier of the where to find the 2022 tax rate. It's specifically, you know, HCAD will say for line 16, use this letter.
Okay.
And so that, they provide me with those reports and then this is the document that shows, that points me where to grab the data from.
Got it. Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Mayor, I appreciate your, your questions that you've put out as well. Obviously, this is going to be something we're going to be talking about for a while, I'm sure. And try to avoid this ever happening again. And again, Kristin, thanks for being here. I appreciate that too.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And I apologize to Mr. Davis. I'd like him to, he had signed up to speak to this issue. I was going to come to you right after staff report and I apologize for that. Mr. Davis, call on you for your three minutes. Thank you.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combs Hill Street, Pearland. First off, I want to say thank you, Councilman Kim Carr, bringing this to the public attention. It was a little surprising when I read, you know, the post on social media. It was good to know. It is disappointing to see it was $8 million then. Tonight, it's 10.3 million. Is that number going to change? Not sure. As I recall from the budget discussions, I think Councilman Kim Carr had identified some areas that we could cut some costs. I'd encourage those to be revisited. In the post, he mentioned they is calling for an investigation. I understand and respect that some don't want to know how we got here, don't want to go down that road. I do think it's appropriate. I have five questions. Some of them may be duplicates of yours, Mr. Mayor, but I think any investigator, preferably not Olson and Olson. I think they, I have five questions I'd like them to answer. Did staff have any idea something was wrong before the budget was adopted? Sounds like probably, but one no for sure. If they did, was council notified in advance? What was the historic trend for Row 19B? And was the 1.3 billion significantly higher than historical? If it's normally 30, 40, 50 million, whatever, and all of a sudden it's 1.3 billion, that sure should have stuck out like a sore thumb. Was the Harris County total value significantly higher than normal? Again, would it stick out? And as I asked before, is that 10.3 million dollar number going to change? I hope y'all will actually have someone look into this and get these answers. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And I do apologize. I meant to come to you just a hair earlier than that. With that, other questions, comments?
I have- I'll be real fast. You sure?
I'll be here a little bit. But first of all, I want to say thank you. I think it's a really weird day and weekend where everybody was so celebratory about the Astros. And at the same time, we got this information on like Thursday or Friday. And like, there's nothing to celebrate about this. We got a $10.3 million hole in the budget. It kind of put it at least a damper for me. Being said, I appreciate member Coza got us these nice hats. If you want to buy the new World Series hat, they're making them over there. We do have something at least positive today to talk about. This is, it's a complex, I think Ms. Bolognick said it, it's a complex process. And I just don't know how we got here. And I still don't, I pulled out the Excel because I'm not a good math guy. But the budget we adopted was like 926. By the way, Josh, can you get supplemental item number four ready? And we're here on the 7th. I mean, that's 42 days. I mean, I got frozen food. That's, you know, I've been there that long. I mean, and now this budget's gone bad. And it's kind of been a failure. And I don't, I still don't understand. So can somebody remind me of Clay or Darren or whoever? How do we find out that the numbers weren't good?
I think that's what we explained.
So, but we revisited the same taxable value number, I guess, for six months, going back and forth?
No, we, what we said was that as part of the review for the TERS and the CAP, we did ask for the latest calculation of the value, and that's where that stood out.
What required that, that we had to go back and do that? Is that like a statutory?
Because we've been talking about having a TERS District 3, and there's a state law that you can only have 25% of your value in a TERS.
Can you say that again? You're talking faster than I think.
We've been talking for several weeks, month, about having a new TERS number three. Part of the requirement for that is that you have to say that no more than 25% of your AV is in TERS total sum. And TERS 2 is about 3.6 billion. And so before we did the calculation, there's enough room to do it TERS 3, and that's what came up.
Wait, wait. If you have more than 25% of the value, you can't, in whatever the box is of the TERS, you statutorily can't do the TERS?
You can't create a new one if you, any more of your values, if more than 25% of your values in a TERS, yes.
How does that connect with?
Because we're updating the calculations to say, what's the latest number for the AV? And taking 25% of that. Before, when we were doing that with the old numbers that we've been working with, there was room to do that. And then the report comes, it showed that it was that much.
Let me pull up the budget process thing that we kind of had. So budget process didn't contemplate the TERS thing at all. That wasn't, it's completely separate. I just want to make sure.
Completely separate.
I'm going to, I think slower, I got a process on this. So we're trying to give that taxpayer-funded bailout to the TERS 3 applicant. And then that issue caused us to blow a $10 million hole in the budget that the citizens actually have to work with.
The TERS has zero to do with-
No, no, but we checked the number. We checked the math.
Yes, we're just doing the math separately for a new TERS 3, and that's where the math comes in.
Had we not been looking at the TERS, we would have found this out in February.
In December, when we're looking at the revenue and saying, hey, this isn't tracking to where it is like we do every year.
So believe it or not, trying to give this funded, taxpayer-funded bill actually helped us because we found the problem earlier. Some weird, roundabout way. Instead of getting a surprise in February and spending and doing all these contracts, we actually got quote unquote, "the benefit" by finding this out 46 days after the budget was adopted.
Had we not contemplated the TERS, we would know it tonight.
I have a funny feeling Mr. Massey Oaks guy isn't going to be really happy when he knows he blew a $10 million hole in our budget for his thing. It's not his fault. I mean, we messed up, but I mean-
I don't know if you're, just to correct, that it's not because of that that's blowing it.
But I mean, we wouldn't have known. That was the tripwire where we actually had to do our homework again, right?
Erme?
Never mind. So can we go ahead and pull up the page four supplemental? So I guess, I really, really appreciate Ms. Bolognick showing up. We'll go to page four of this document. And I just want to kind of understand this. So I heard them come to us and tell us we've got an issue, but the next page, please. Our budget emanates from like the city of Pearland, though. Like there's, there's got to be some level of, we thought, here's what we were going to do. Finance teams work together, and then we just get this data from external, external to us. In this case, the worksheet and I guess the supporting report data. And then it rolls up, I guess, to the finance team. I mean, this is a budget document, then it rolls up to the city manager, and then it eventually rolls up to us. Is that my understanding of the process, at least generally speaking?
There's a thousand different elements that go into the city's budget.
Oh, they do get the data from the county, then it comes to the city.
Data that comes in from the county, there's reports that come in from text dot probably, there's water and sewer reports.
And then it goes to the finance team, and the finance team aggregates all of this. And then it comes to the city manager, and they put together a memorandum with the recommendation. And then it actually comes to the council for an up or down vote.
Okay, yes.
I just, the point I guess I'm trying to illustrate here is, I'm, the part that I am struggling with is like, where were the check and balances on our side of the fence? I don't, I have not heard that. I've heard us drag right, wrong, or indifferent. You know, the county this, the county this, the county this. And that's fine. I understand that they are part of a piece of this gumbo. But I think a lot of the responsibility, I mean, this is not the first budget we've ever done. This is not the first time we've had three counties provide information to us. And all of a sudden, now we've blown a $10 million hole in this budget that we had a ton of agitation about, a lot of animosity about, a lot of back and forth about. And I mean, it didn't last two months before it started falling apart. And I just, I'm struggling. That was the thing I had to think through the whole weekend. It's like, how did we get here today? I know we're going to talk about solutions, but I think this is a time for us to be super introspective. I'd like to pull open supplemental item number three. And so I started kind of unwinding this and starting to figure out like, where did we get to? I'd like to get to page 53 on this document. This was from a 2022 document. And I think that we had a lot of discussion and a lot of comments on certified, keep going a little further. We're getting real close. Certified and estimated. And you may want to type in Ctrl+F and do certified. It'll, it'll, it'll do that. This is from the, yeah, this is from the 2022 budget. Let's keep going. Let's probably a little bit more. Josh, I would open up the PDF I sent, but that's fine. It might be, better off typing Fort Bend County in there.
Councilmember, you said it's page 54 of this document?
On the emails I had sent previously, I know you guys dropped it into this gigantic number. But I would probably Ctrl+F Fort Bend. F-O-R-T. Let's try the next one. Yeah. Go back. That might be it. Go back from that. One more back from that. There we go. Sorry about that. I apologize. These are big documents. And so this is the FY book that we produce. And what I noticed when I started digging through here was, we did, this is from the city produce. It's been out for a year and a half. It's on the city's website. We have certified value notations kind of on the upper left. Harris County has two little, little plus notations. If you read it down at the bottom and you scroll down, that plus notation says Harris County values for FY '22 are not certified. I think that is a key bit of data. When I started saying, how the hell did we get here? Because in that budget, and I was here for that, and I think most of the members were here, it's very clear, there's 11.3 in value. That little, little, I don't know, is that like a asterisk or not asterisk? But there's not a value in the certified because it's not there. And so that is telling me, as a person who has to look at this budget and analyze it, there's something a little off. Don't have it. Got to go look in the notes. If it's any good person that has the academic background, and I can understand what they're trying to tell me. They're trying to tell me I have a value, but it is not for sure tied down, locked down. I think that is completely fair. And that's a good notation. Let's go to supplemental item number four, which will be our most recent budget. If you go look at that, maybe let's go click Fort Bend. We'll go from there. You're in the wrong, you're on the wrong document. Okay. There we go. Hold on. Go to the next page, please. Real quick. Okay, there we go. That's the right page. Please go back up. Next page, please. Just scroll right up. There you go. This is super important right here. The city contracts with Brazoria County for the billing collection of property taxes. The budget as filed is based on certified values from Fort Bend, Brazoria, and preliminary Harris County values. That jives with everything I've heard so far. That makes sense to me. When I read and looked through our budget book, I understood it. Here's the thing, looks correct. They are literally telling me what I need to know. This item is buried in a 300-page book. It's two sentences buried in there. Let's go to the next page. Scroll back up. Look at this. Your certified value in Harris County doesn't have that little marker anymore. They're just telling me, and when I'm looking at this value, that I got $14.4 billion in value. There's no notation notes that it's estimated, literally as it was in the previous year. When we're kind of going down a brass tacks and trying to process this, I think the certified value is there. In fairness to the team who put this together, there is a two-sentence marker in there. I will own it. I didn't see it. I'm going to raise my hand, take ownership of that. But if I go compare this year over year, the notation here is completely different. This is saying our Harris County values are good. They're locked in. They're tight. That's how I, how I would interpret it. I think most reasonable people would anticipate those look different in those two years. So when I start understanding how we got here, that there's no notations, I just start realizing it's really easy to fall into this trap unless you were looking for this. What I would tell you is, this little document here is the homestead values. It's from 813. It's from the first proposed budget presentation. And then I started digging through this. Of the 27,000 values parcels that have a homestead exemption, 21,000 are 10%. It just doesn't seem to jive. How do we grow, where did this 3.1 billion come from? If almost all of these people are homesteaded and they're not, they're not getting a 20 or 30% increase in their value overall, they're getting somewhere around 10%. As the city manager pointed out earlier, most of the city is residential. There's three corridors, 35 and 288, and parts of, you know, Broadway that are commercial. But most of us were probably 70, 80% residential. This doesn't seem to jive. Your spidey sense starts to realize something's not adding up. So I guess I would then say, can we go down a little bit further? I want to say like 40 pages down to the valuation. There's going to be a big chart, going to have lines, Josh, and it's going to have the net valuation line. It's probably 10 pages down from here. There we go. That's the one. You see, we're ditty-bopping along. This is 10 years of the net values. And the spike on the right is the budget we're talking about. It is just so far freaking above everything else. If you go look from years 2020, 1 to 22, that's about, you know, quarter billion here, quarter billion the next year, and then 3.1 billion. That's roughly 14 times. This is where my checks and balances brain starts going off real hard. Why did we not raise our hand? Why did we not internally say, this number looks really, really, really odd? Comparing, I mean, we've had fast growth years in this city, but not a third in one year. Not a third of the entire city in one year, which is what this budget presupposed. If you scroll down to the notation, this is saying certified values, net assessed valuations. Just, the notations here are not very good. It's just, this is the validation of, we have the money. I don't think we did the homework to go validate, do we have it before we went and spent it? And we went and approved the largest budget in the history of the city. Where am I? Can we go to item, supplemental item number one? And this is a very simple one. If we, if we had a really big value check, let's go down to item F. It's page four. If we had a question on the values here, we should have gone to our financial management policy and looked really, really hard at this. And I don't think that happened. I'm going to read item F here for those whose eyes are not so good. "In order to protect the city from revenue shortballs and to maintain a stable level of service, the city shall use a conservative, objective, reasonable, and analytical approach in preparing revenue estimates. This process shall include historical collection rates, really important trends, development, and probable economic changes. The approach is intended to reduce the likelihood of actual revenues falling short of budget estimates and should avoid mid-year service charges." We literally had a policy that we didn't follow. I mean, we didn't check the historical collection rates. The year before was a quarter billion dollars, 250 million, and then we went to 3 billion in one year. And then we didn't look at the trends. I mean, as simple as that. I mean, it's in black and white. And the part that I struggled with and I had to think about, it took me about two hours to figure this all out. Just how many people are in this process? Like, how many people literally missed this item? And so I would just tell you, they're all at the beginning of the budget book. I mean, we've got seven finance staffers. We've got a city manager, and then the council has to take ownership. We have to take ownership that we had this miss. And I just absolutely struggle that it wasn't just somebody telling us on a worksheet something was messed up. We didn't have enough critical rigor applied to this. And I'm beyond miffed because I heard some of the solutions are, we're going to take from the charities ARPA money. Or we're going to take from the sidewalk, which a lot of residents have told us is a gigantic sore spot for them. They are going to be the ones, because we as professionals miss this, that they're going to be the ones that have to pay the consequence. Member Barry has talked about drainage, has literally ruffled feathers with the EDC about drainage, and we're going to slow that up to fix this problem, this 10.3 billion dollar problem. And so I would just tell you, after thinking about all of this, I just really think we've, if this was a publicly traded company, a lot of people wouldn't even got back to their desks. They would have been asked to leave and to turn in their badge. And I'm, I'm just absolutely disappointed that we literally have this gigantic gap in a hole in a budget that's not even two months old. And we're trying to figure this out. But I really think we need some level of independent rigor applied to this. I've asked for that. I think the citizens deserve that. These are systemic issues. And the reality is, is that, as member Cardone pointed out, this is utility billing all over again. But we took six months to go and decide to authorize an audit to figure out how this happened. I think we need to answer the mayor's questions about what are the processes to put in place after the fact. But the reality is that the horses are out of the barn. But I think we need to have a very independent review of how we got here. And I don't want to besmirch the county, but I have a funny feeling it is going to be a gumbo with a mix of ways that we could have gotten this better. But as I've said to Ms. Bolognick offhand, Ms. Bolognick doesn't work for us. She's a duly-elected member of the county leadership. There's a lot of other people who work for us that we can be accountable towards. But the reality is, is they're one little part of the process. We have to do the rest of it on our own. And I don't think that that happened today or in this last six weeks or six months of this budget process. And so I'm just going to tell you, I'm going to reiterate the ask. And so I'm just gonna tell you, I, I'm going to reiterate the ask, I'm going to have the time to figure out, to member Barry's point, what are we going to do to fix this in the interim, fix bondholders fix this, but I'm going to say that we need to have an independent third party come in and review the documentation, talk to all the parties, and tell us where do we fail, where, where can we get better, and what can we do in the interim? Because the reality is, we're one of sixteen cities that have three counties, there's cities like Corpus, cities like Copper's Cove, cities like Houston, cities like Katy, Selma, Church, San Marcos, we're not the first city to have three county jurisdictions involved, we're just not. But the reality is something happened here, and I, I don't have a good answer for it, but I just know I, we, we failed, and, and we're gonna have ten-point-seven, ten-point-three million dollars that we have to go find, and it's gonna be uncomfortable. And I think we have to ask a hard question about who was involved, how were they involved, how can we be better to catch these items? And so, I'll leave that as my thoughts here. I would tell you, I have a memorandum here, I'm not gonna read it, but it's dated on September fifteenth, and it literally highlighted this problem that we actually have right now. It, it's literally here, it is, it is in bold print, and I think that we had an inkling of what was going on, but I don't think we spoke up, and that's the thing that troubles me the most. That's all I got.
Thank you for that. Ms. Bolognick, I do have one quick question, because it's, I don't know that it's been answered, and that is, clearly, Harris County had a one-point-three-one-four billion-dollar number that they had out there, and then when we called for the TERS values again, not the TERS values, but the values in order to look at, at a TERS number three, it came back at thirty. And so, did they give any explanation as to that change?
No, so when I contacted them, asking about how their reports work and certified values versus certified estimates, the email response that I did receive was, I do not know, I do not calculate tax rates. So, if, I'm sure if you speak to staff, they will second the fact that it's very difficult to get in touch or to get answers. That, that's, that's just where we are.
They, they threw their hands up, basically, we don't calculate that, but somebody put that into a worksheet and sent it forwarded on.
Yes.
When asked again, that number drastically changed.
Yeah, so it's the difference between how they, what, what they consider on the certified role during certified estimates versus under protest nor under, nor on the certified role.
And it didn't seem off, because the year before, that number was one-point-one.
Correct.
And are we sure the one-point-one was correct? I mean, obviously, we didn't-
I will say that this year, Harris County changed their sources on their documents and changed reports.
Right.
I don't know if there's something wrong on their end, or, but yeah, this is, so last year's calculation on how they presented the data appears to be correct, this year they changed their sources on where I grab information from.
Right, okay. Turn it over to rest of council, questions, comments?
I am, I know some members didn't claim an interest on wanting to know how we got here, but I am curious how we got here. I, of course, I wanna work on solutions also, but I don't, I, I don't see how we can do that, get, get that done tonight, what-
And, and I think I would disagree, I think we all wanna know how we got here.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't know of anybody that said, I don't wanna know how we got here. I think everybody wants to know how we got here, so, you know, that's, that's probably the chief question for all of it, that, I mean-
Then we'll-
How we go about getting that information, certainly.
I don't remember, also, we, I keep hearing that we were told that they questioned, that this amount was in question, but I don't remember that either, I don't remember ever being told that, that this amount was in question. On slide twenty tonight, it said estimated amount for the Harris County amount, but in our budget book, it said certified amount for that amount. And, you know, looking back, remember Camp Car had an excellent point, there's, right there, there's two sentences that say, you know, preliminary numbers, but, I mean, out of a, out of two binders worth of material, you know, if we miss that sentence and we see certified amount, plus, we have to depend on what we're being told, the numbers we're being given, at the end of the day, to make our decisions, and, and to ask Ms. Bolognick if the hundred, over a hundred entities she calculates for to compare us, you know, to compare what she's seeing for us with those, that's not what you base a decision on, that's, those emails saying that, you know, well, is that the numbers you see rises everywhere or decreases everywhere? She's looking at over a hundred other things, it doesn't matter, we're only looking at Perilian, and I don't think comparing those and asking her for that is, is fair. I just, that's really, I guess that's really all of that.
Member Owens?
Yeah, I, I thank you for listening to all the discussion, we know where we're coming from, you know, and the problem is, the only thing that we gotta look at now is, this is where we're at, how do we get that taken care of? So we need to get a plan in place for the difference in the, in the amount of money that we've talked to, but we know next time what to look for and to verify, but, you know, talking about it's not gonna change the numbers, the numbers are what they are right now, and that's it, so then we have to make the changes, or mayor has to make the changes on what we need to look at and go through to do that, so, that's just my part of it, it seems like it, it's been talked all the way through, through there, and we know where the problem was, and, and, but knowing where it's at and what's happened, it's not gonna make the numbers change, so, okay, let's come up with what we can, you know, to do what we need to do.
Commissioner Adams, I'd like to say thank you, I did reach out to you to assist in getting Mrs. Bolognick here, Chris and I appreciate you being here as well. Also, I reached out to Matt Sabesta and David Lender, so I appreciate their assistance as well, I thank you for kinda helping us in this situation. It is my first budget experience that I've been through, it's pretty upsetting to spend the time and effort that we did as a collective group to have this happen. I don't know how we got here, other than it looks kinda like we got some bad information. From there, I'm committed to, to take the time and effort, whatever it's gonna be, to get this straight, and try and get us there to be able to figure out how to make it right. One thing that I can say, thank God we didn't go to below the no new revenue rate that we did have, because at that time, it would have been today even worse than where we're at now. So, from there, I'm committed in this process to figure out where we need to be, where we need to go, and try and get this on track. One question that I did have as far as our policies and whatnot, Mayor, you said there was previously sixty days, and then we moved it to ninety days. As far as, is that just guidelines, is there enforcement mechanism or anything?
It's your own policy, so-
It's just strictly a guideline, is what it is.
Yep.
If I can add a little bit of clarity, so, that came from a ratings agency call through our financial advisor a couple years ago, didn't give us a bad rating, but basically a footnote that said they'd like to see our reserves at ninety days versus sixty, so that's what started it a couple years ago. That's why I think John Robuck will be here on the twenty-first for some other items, and we'll have a discussion item where we can pick his brain a little bit more.
Okay, so as far as, with that being at nineties, does that impact our ratings, does it impact, I mean, is there-
Great questions, for the twenty-first.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just asking, that's what I'm trying to-
Mayor, can I ask Clay one, or ask somebody one thing, since we're, are we a penny below no new revenue right now?
We're just over a penny below.
Is, what's, is that gonna do anything to us for next year?
TBD, I mean, it's-
To be determined, right.
I referenced that, you know, I, I don't know if tax office is locked in, that they have to use what we used during the budget, but it would seem fair to me that the updated one would be used as the basis for comparison, but, you know, if we have to go to legislature, or if we have to get some opinion from comptroller, that's TBD.
Well, wait, hold on, we, I just wanna add some clarity to that, we made a budget on fourteen-point-three billion dollars, plus or minus, however we got there is how we got there, but as, as far as I know, it's, it's rate versus value equals taxable revenue. If we now have three-point-one billion in phantom revenue, we're now closer to the eleven, what we were last year.
It's actually one-point-three.
One-point-three, sorry, apologize, thank you for catching-
You said three several times, it's one-point-three.
We're not, well, we, we projected a three-point-one billion-dollar increase, one-point-three of it was phantom, it didn't exist.
Right.
And so, what's gonna end up happening is, we're tied down at this rate, but the value is lower. This thing, and I don't know if you said it, is gonna have a long tail, if the state doesn't give us a favorable outcome, you're gonna have a lower value, means you need to have a higher rate, so we're possibly, not saying we're doing it, I'm not, none of us are here, we don't know, but if we didn't get a favorable outcome, to generate the revenue that we had this year, in theory, the one-ten, we're gonna have to have a tax rate increase to offset a lower value, because the one-point-three billion was phantom. So this will have a long tail, it will be complex, we got into this gumbo in a complex manner, it's gonna take a complex manner to get out of it, but I don't see math, knowing finance, that this is gonna move very easily, because that billion, that eleven-three billion, now we've added some to it, it's hard to make that up, and, and that's why the gravity of this situation, there's a ten-million-dollar hole, we have to offset, so, to your point, the, the possibility a year from now is that this council gets to vote on a possible tax increase, if we wanna keep the budget at the hundred-and-ten million in general fund expenses. We wanna change it, that's different, but it's, it's a value times rate calculation.
Right, and obviously, these will be issues being taken up in our, you know, early workshop, you know, talking about strategic priorities of where and how we advance the ball, we'll be doing that in, in probably late February, early March, so it'll be important that we, we do discuss all that. One of the reasons why, to that point on tax rate, I mean, we're contemplating a bond program in May of twenty-three, and in light of this, and this is, these are questions that need to be asked of Mr. Robuck, and, and what does this do to us on the debt side? You know, does that, do we stay the course, does it move to November, does it move to twenty-four? I mean, nobody necessarily wants to do that, but those are, those are the right questions to be asked and answered, so we, we know where we're at. And I do wanna address one thing, member Cade, you said that, you know, nobody mentioned or email or anything about a particular value or anything in this worksheet from staff, you're correct, but staff did say, not only, you know, in emails, but also in the budget presentation, that they had problems with the calculation of the worksheet, they couldn't put their finger on it, but they had in their gut a problem with the worksheet. And so that was said numerous times, and I'm not defending, I'm just trying to say that was said, and so, no, they didn't know until the recalculation to go and get the value for a TERS three, did this even come about? And so, I'm thankful we were at least contemplating that, or we wouldn't have found it out until, because Harris County didn't send, oh, we messed up, here's thirty million in this number, it's, we found it out when we went back to the well to ask that question, so, remember Camp Car, I think your, I think your questions are valid in that, how do we, how, what, and where? My first question, how did we get here? That question has to be asked and answered, how did we get here? Then, whose role, all the way through, from us, meaning city staff, to the county, to the CADs, what role does everybody play in that? I think it's important that we figure that out, and need to be contemplating that in the days and mon, and, and weeks to come, right? We need to figure that out, we don't need to drag it out, but we do need to get the questions asked and answered, how did we get here? So I think it's real important that we, that we do that. Yeah, I was fixing to do last call, so-
Thank you, Mayor. I think to the, the question that member Cade posed earlier that you just spoke to, that is one thing that if there is consensus, we move forward with an independent investigation of how this all came to pass. As part of that, I think just the general communication, I think it's been set up here, and there's been, you know, back and forth discussion, to what degree I think we all feel that information is free-flowing versus being metered and so forth, but something like this, I know looking at the, the memo that member Camp Car pointed out, there was something in that memo that did speak to this, and trying to figure out what the things are that occur in this process that rise to the level of everything is snow. I'll just say that, you know, over the past couple of years, it seems as though we, we, at the council level, which I understand, because we're high-level oversight, don't really kind of get these notices until it's kinda too late, right? And often feel like we're put in these situations where nothing can be done, we just gotta figure out a way out of it, and figure out how to course correct moving forwards so it doesn't happen again. That seems to happen quite often, and I, I think trying to say that, you know, maybe something was put in a presentation, I understand that point, Mayor, but even, I, I use tonight's packet as my example, there are one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-five pages in the packet we got on Thursday. If you give us three days to read through that, that's five-hundred-seventy-eight pages a day, that's one-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-six minutes on average a human being can read, that would require nineteen hours a day of straight reading to just get through this information. And quite often, our packets are of that size, the budget books are massive, so I think, you know, trying to figure out as part of the process, whatever process we decide to move forward with, is determining how some information is determined to be of a certain level of importance. I think this definitely will, would have qualified for having a little bit more of a highlight to council than maybe it did, because, I, I mean, I understand you saying that it was brought forward, and I know that it was mentioned a couple of times, but not to the degree where I felt as though there was a bell being rung, so I would like to have some time spent on trying to figure out how information is determined to be of certain levels of importance.
Any other questions, comments from council?
I gotta ask Mr. Hernandez, I mean, I, we, you're, you're, are you mixing the discovery and what we said from Wednesday to the earlier budget materials, or help me out with what you're talking to?
No, no, it seems, so to the mayor's point, we only discovered this because of, right? But it seemed as though there were questions leading up to-
So just to be clear on that, if I can, this is important, what the mayor referenced and what you saw over and over again in, in September, was that the worksheet was producing numbers that provided less revenue than they did the prior year, that's what he said, and that's what we said many times, there, there can be no doubt about that, and that's the part that we're saying.
I, I don't, I don't know that it was, okay, I'll, I'll let member Camp Car speak.
All right, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna get this real good, real quick, for a second. You have your presentation at the end of July with a staff member saying, this number is really big, I appreciate that they said, this number is really big, it's three billion, not three million, three billion with a B. The mayor, we were having the discussion, and I banged a lot of these council members, and I apologize for that, about the no new rate, and the mayor, to his defense, said, this calculation is saying we would have collected more money. He said it in a meeting, it's on video, you guys backed it up. The item that member Hernandez is pointing out is, when we have an alarm bell-
The alarm bell as to what the worksheet did was made, there, there can be no doubt about that.
Let me, let me, let me help you, real quick.
Oh, I'll help you, okay, keep going.
Okay, so on September fifteenth, here's a memo to the city council from Clay Pearson and Amy Johnson. It's right there, it's got your name on it, it's got a bunch of highlighting on it, and on page six, this nine-page memo, so not at the first paragraph, not the first page, not the second page, not the third page, on the sixth page is this, and it's highlighted, and I've got it in my little red here, and I, I didn't put that in the book, but I'm glad we're getting a chance to talk about that, Clay. Fourth, these are projections, as we learned in FY '22, revenues can come in higher or lower than expected. Fair, thus, as the city reduces reserves to the minimum policy, the fallout from the revenue shortfall would become more painful to a decreased revenue. This is the best part, in bold font, of particular note is the Harris County uncertified tax rolls. Bold font, which will not be certified until after the budget and tax rate adoption. In general, last year, Harris County overestimated the uncertified tax rolls for numerous cities who then found themselves with less property tax revenue, like us, once the rolls were finally certified after budget and tax rates were adopted. You literally call out the problem that we're doing here and you buried on page six of a memorandum between the first and second reading.
Give me a break about the burying, because you talk about bolding and highlighting and stuff like that. The order those come in are just the order in which the questions came up, so don't tell me that.
In fairness, in fairness, you literally have a memorandum, you put together, got your name on it, violates the policies. You literally know that there's a problem here, you raised your hand.
Oh my God, no, 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 that's not, that's not.
I, I mean, it's negligence.
That's not true.
It's negligence. It's what it is. And, and the hard part that I, I find, and this is the thing after digging for, I don't know, two hours to figure this out? The definition of negligence is simple, failure to take proper care in doing something.
Oh my God.
He's pointing out that you had a problem and that you weren't raising your hand quietly enough and you buried it on page six of a nine-page memo.
Well, member Kamkar, I don't know if I'd go so far as to say it's.
You're being more charitable.
Negligence, but I will say that I, I think that it, from my assessment of the material that was given to us, it does seem that, that there were some internal bells being rung and maybe it just wasn't to the level that it really caught my attention. And I can only speak for myself, but obviously, the, the council didn't seem to, to pick up on it, so.
The bell that was rung was that the worksheet, the math gave us less revenue, that's what we've said. That's what the mayor was referencing, that's what we said.
But then after that, we moved forward with the, the budget as it.
Yeah, we, we had the worksheet, we had that, as we went off for this morning, that's, we had no, that had no other reason to believe that that wasn't giving us the right numbers.
From our, because I don't recall, other than the one, by the, member Kamkar presented a supplement, really anything that would have alarmed me, other than just seeing that, that one spike to kind of say, what was it? And I felt justified, or I felt as though it was justified based off of, you know, what we had been presented. But okay, I'm just giving my, my feedback on this, and like I said, as we move forward, just paying attention to how we can catch these things, at least from the council level, because, you know, we're doing things from a very high level, we go off of the information that's given to us. And if there are things that you feel internally would potentially have an impact on a decision that we're making, I would just like to know maybe if there's a better way.
And the reference that was made in the memo that member Kamkar referenced was relation to the Harris County, that's $140 million of the whole piece of that. That nothing, I mean, there's many things at work here, so you can't.
Sure, I, I understand that, and I'm not, and I'm not asking you to come up with a solution. I'm just saying that as we move forward, if we can think about how to critically evaluate information internally to decide if it rises to the level of, of maybe a little semblance of an alarm bell for council. That, that's all I'm asking, because obviously, I missed it, everybody else up here missed it.
There was nothing, okay.
And, and that is part of what we need to do coming out of this, is even from the staff level, if, if their gut feel is something's off, at what point do you raise the flag saying, where, where's the issue? I will say, remember Hernandez, that I mentioned in one of the budget workshops, that the no new revenue rate, not the rate we adopted, the no new revenue rate that was presented actually was producing $4 million less than the previous year, I mentioned that. And that was the question that staff was looking at, that the no new revenue rate should be producing equal revenue. And it wasn't, and that was where they were, their gut was telling them something was wrong with the calculation in the worksheet. And so it did, was, is there culpability, there's culpability all the way around, okay? At, at the end of the day, garbage in is garbage out. And we had a, we had a garbage in and a garbage out from the appraisal districts to the tax worksheet to, we didn't, maybe we didn't answer or ask the right question. But yeah, there's culpability all the way around. And I think getting to the bottom of how, where and what, and the flow of information and everything else can help do that and get us on the right track, as far as that's concerned, we're still going to have a hole. And, and so we've got two tracks that we need to be looking at. One is, how did we get here? Number two, what are we doing moving forward, because we still have a city operate with the same level of care, concern, level of service and everything else that people expect. And we're going to have to have those, those conversations.
Mayor, I know we want to wrap this real quick, I just want to be on the record right now. I am, I hear that the items were brought of what could be some solutions in the interim. I'd like to take more time, I, I don't want to move forward with those. Not saying that those won't be the answer that I'll vote for, but I, I just think everything needs to be on the table. And so I'd like to just say, if somebody says Alex is supportive, I'm not supportive, I'd like to take more time to review.
No, that's, that's fair, and we do need to take some time to, which is why we asked, instead of rushing this on the 21st, go to the 5th. Take the right time to do it right and, and get it right. So with that, last call, don't see any, we're going to move on to new business item, let me go backwards here. Number four, Mr. Owens, would you present new business item number four, please? Look at your screen in front of you.
Michael, all right, number four, consideration possible action, second final reading of ordinance number 2000M-239, I so moved.
Second. We have a motion of second, staff report.
Just real briefly, this was a PD that would be before you two weeks ago, and the Soft Smith branch on the east side there, nothing to add.
All right, any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Parton Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
All right, moving to item number five, Mr. Hernandez, would you place that on the table, please?
Yes, sir, let me see if I can find it here on my paper. Consideration possible action resolution number R2022-256, I move.
We have a motion of second, staff report.
So this is a new contract, preparing for additional fire hardware and putting us with the vendor contract for preventative maintenance on the front end, much as you wouldn't buy a new vehicle, buying the extended warranty, if you will. But this is a little bit more than that with preventative. And I believe that's overall going to be a net cost savings and keep us on the discipline of that preventative program. And just, we're putting this in place while we await the equipment's arrival, nothing to add.
All right, questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Parton Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, with that, we've, item number six, we've dispensed of items removed from consent agenda. Other business, mayor council issues for city council discussion. Moving into executive session under Texas Government Code, section 551.074 Personnel Matters, section 551.071 Consultation with City Attorney, section 551.087 Economic Development, section 551.071 Consultation with City Attorney Regarding Legal Matters and the Sale of Municipal Assets. We will recess into executive session at 9:16.
Anyway, council has returned from executive session at 11:25. Moving to new business continued. Mayor Proton, would you place number seven on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2022-252, so moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any staff report needed on that?
No, sir. This is just the specific intent to reimburse relative to maintenance and upkeep of our recreation center and auditorium.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns from council?
Yes, Mayor. Just very briefly, we pulled this off of the last intent to reimburse along with the CIP. We were having discussions with Carolina ISD that have still not resolved themselves. They're our 50/50 partner on capital expenditures and in light of the conversations we've had tonight where we're essentially $10 million in the hole, on top of the fact that we're going into a recession if we're not already in there, I think it's really, really hard to see us moving forward on a project where there is uncertainty on how we get our 50/50 partner to the table. That was why I'm not going to be supportive of this. That's why I pulled it off last time. It doesn't sound like anything has changed externally with that group, the Carolina ISD, which is really frustrating, but it just... We need to take care of our assets, but we also have to have clear line of sight, and we don't have that right now. So I'm not going to be supportive of this.
Fair enough. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Mayor Proton Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Moving to new business continued, number eight. Coker, do you have a?
Yes, Mayor. I have a recommended motion for council to consider, and that would be authorizing the city manager or is designated to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the city and the Parentland Economic Development Corporation, authorizing the development agreement with Prospect 2206, authorizing to enter into a letter finance agreement with Lower Kirby Parentland Management District, and approving initiating the acquisition process for needed right-of-way easements associated with the construction and funding of public infrastructure to serve portions of the Lower Kirby District as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
You have who did the motion in the second? We have a motion in a second. Any additional comments, questions from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens? Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, we'll move to adjournment, and we'll adjourn at 11:28.